It's called to order the, where are we? The Sparks City Council meeting of September 28th, 2015. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt, absent. City Attorney Adams.
Here.
Acting City Manager Jeff Kronk.
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Okay, if you'd all stand, please, for the invocation. We have with us today Pastor Barb West, Sparks Church of the Nazarene. Welcome. Barb, how are you?
Thank you, Mayor, doing well, thank you. Would you all join with me by bowing your heads? Our Heavenly Father, we do come to you thanking you for this beautiful day, and thank you for this gathering. And Father, you know all of the ones who have a comment that they'd like to make, so we pray that you would be with them. We thank you too for Mayor Martini and this fine council. And Lord, you know all of the things that our city needs, and so we pray that you would give wisdom to our leaders, so that they would know what it is that is best for the city of Sparks. We thank you, Lord, for all of our responders, like our police, our firefighters, our EMTs, and pray a blessing and protection over them, and we pray it would protect all of our schoolteachers, as well as all of the students here in this great city called Sparks. God bless America, and God bless Sparks, Nevada. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thanks, Barb. Very good. Would you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Ratty, would you lead us, please?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, before we go into public comment, I want to make one announcement. Public comment under number four and under number, where are we? Thirteen point one. Could speak about any item, whether it's on the agenda or not. The first readings, nine point eight and nine point nine, when we come to those particular items, we will not be taking public comment. This is a first reading only. So if you want to talk about feral cats or chickens, you need to do it under item number four, or item number thirteen point two. Okay?
And bees.
Pardon me?
And bees.
Yeah. The birds and the bees and all of the good stuff, okay. All right, everyone understands? So if you want to do one of those, you need to do it under probably number four, or number thirteen point two. Okay? Right. Yes?
Thirteen point one.
What? Okay, lost my head. Okay, I have the list here. First, Karen Jacobs. Come on, Karen.
To be privy to the vote.
What's that?
To be privy to the vote. That's next.
It's okay to speak?
I did something wrong. Have three minutes.
Members of the council, Mayor Martini, my name is Karen Jacobs, for the record, and I'm a retired police officer, and I have an organization, Tactical Team for the Protection of Animals, All Animals, TTPA, and as you know what that is. I'm here today because I have been working with three out-of-state, three different states other than Nevada, on the feral cat situation. They've come across the same problem that the city of Sparks is, this ordinance that you're trying to pass. So we have come up with some really great ideas that they have passed, and it's good for your city and for the cats. So I would like to meet, if possible, with a couple of your council members before the next meeting, the final meeting, and go over what we have come up with, before the final viewing of this. Would that be possible?
Yeah, but you can meet with any member of the council, you just have to arrange that.
Yes. Two of them would be fine, or one?
Whatever you like.
Okay. Oh, yes, really good ideas, and it's going to be...
We just can't have more than two meet at one time.
Pardon me?
We cannot have more than two council members meet at one time.
Okay, understood. And who do I make that through?
Each individual council member. You can get ahold of them.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, have some great ideas, and it's good for the city of Sparks and for the feral cats.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Martini? Would it be possible to ask that all that information is sent to the city attorney's office before a meeting with the council? So we know what's happening, what proposals are coming on up? Because the last thing you want to do is make a proposal, and two weeks, the city attorney determines it's illegal.
Yes, sir, I will get that information to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is John Rhodes. John?
My name's John Rhodes, I'm a City of Sparks resident, live up at DeAndrea, and we've sent the, I'm also actually on the board there as well. We sent a letter in February, I believe, to, it was hand-delivered here, and we still have not had a response from that.
Do you have an attorney?
Huh?
Do you have an attorney representing you in this?
I don't have an attorney. We did, it was a letter from an attorney.
Yeah, so we...
Can't meet with you, we can talk with your attorney.
Well, I think the attorney asked for a response, he hasn't responded to the attorney. I mean, how much...
We'll deal with your attorney, sir.
Okay. That's unacceptable.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, if the board sends, dismiss me. The other end is DeAndrea, the actual handbook, has restrictions on the, grass has to be mowed, has to be kept safe, the sprinklers have to be maintained, and we've sent numerous letters to Armando, and there's still a big fire hazard there.
Is that it, John?
Is that going to be addressed? I mean, who do we have to go to?
We don't normally have, we don't answer your questions during the three-minute comment.
But if anybody responds to me, I can, my time limit is open, correct?
Yes, you're correct.
Yeah. So if there's a problem there, if there's a fire zone...
Who did you send the letters to, John?
They were hand-delivered here.
Are you talking about the original letters to the attorney? Okay, then he'll talk to your attorney, and I can have Armando call you on the grass issue.
Would you?
Yes.
Beautiful. Thank you, sir.
Next up is Susan Rhodes. Welcome, Susan.
Hi. Excuse me if I'm nervous, I've never been here before, but again, my name is Susan Rhodes. I've been a resident of Sparks for 20 years. Right now, I am living at DeAndrea, and basically, we're just here about the agricultural zoning ordinance. I guess the big question that most of us have is why are we changing zoning now, and why for a handful of people? After talking to some of you prior to this, it's become obvious to me that the chicken coop, I mean, deal, we're owning chickens, the mess, the smell, the rodents, et cetera, and from what I understand, in the last couple of weeks, I've talked to people about it, we already have a raccoon problem in a lot of the areas in Sparks. Why are we wanting chickens there so we can feed them and have more raccoons? So definitely against that. But as far as the bees and the beekeeping, as far as I know, beekeeping is a hobby, and I didn't, I don't even think you have to be licensed to do it, so what happens when you stop and the bees just fly away? They just nest somewhere. So again, why would anybody want bees next to their home? But the big deal for us, even though we are in a covenant-controlled community, is why are we, are vineyards or orchards or whatever going to be allowed in these communities? And why would anybody want to be smelling the manure? Why would anyone want to deal with pesticides in Sparks? Or the rodents, or all the problems that they serve? I know that there's a big grant right now out from UNR to put vineyards in, so I'm concerned that that's going to affect our city. Years and years ago, we went from being an agricultural area, pretty much, to a thriving city where people like to shop and open businesses and live. I certainly want to live here, but I don't want to live with pests and bees and raccoons and everything else that might come around because of this. So I guess what we're asking, is this the first step for master-planned communities to actually have the zoning changed on those? So if your master-planned community, like DeAndrea, the golf course closes, is somebody going to be able to change that zoning? Make it into, from a golf course, into a vineyard or an orchard or whatever? I'm just concerned this is opening a door by doing this now, and passing the zoning, to changing a lot of the different places that are in our city, that we didn't sign up for this. If we wanted to live in an agricultural area, we could have moved to Spanish Springs, or Gardinerville, or Fernley, or Fallon. So I've talked to other people here today, and they assured me that's not an issue, but they said that that would really have to come down to a legal issue that we'd have to address with the city attorney. So I guess that's the big question here. Is this the open door for somebody being able to change our zoning in our city to basically screw up all these golf courses and other places that have died, or unfortunately are in bankruptcy, or in looking like an eyesore? So that's the question I have for the city council, so please don't pass this. I mean, I don't want to open any doors to somebody being able to come in and change our community. Why go back in time? Nobody wants to shop at Legends while they smell manure. Nobody wants to open a business there, and I can't believe executives of Tesla want to live in an area that's filled with pesticides and the smell of manure and chicken coops and bees. So that's pretty much it for me, but thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, did you get that down, her question, and then we'll get back to her? Okay, good. Great. Oops, sorry. Carrie Parker?
Good afternoon, city council, Mr. Mayor, city attorney. My name is Carrie Parker, I'm a lawyer at Snell &amp; Wilmer. I am here on behalf of St. Mary's Regional Medical Center, and I have with me Deborah Simon, the Director of Managed Care Contracting Nevada. And I'm here on behalf of Agenda Item 9.7, the hospital contract. My colleague, Bill Peterson, sent a letter today to the city attorney, as well as others, and I just wanted to hit on some of his points for your consideration. St. Mary's believes that the agreement under consideration for possible approval today is not part of the materials provided by the city council, sorry, provided to the city council, and that it is not appropriate for the city council to approve an agreement that they have not even seen. Also, St. Mary's questions the savings that are reported in the supporting material to your Agenda Item of approximately $600,000 for the three-year period. We don't believe that there's enough detail provided to the city council for you to make an informed decision as to these savings. What are these savings compared to? Compared to the current contract? Compared to a proposal? Compared to what? It just says savings. St. Mary's also believes that there was a calculation error in calculating the savings, and encourages the city council to question staff, or whoever recommends that there are savings. St. Mary's also believes that the procurement process was not followed in this matter. The city of Sparks is a local government agency, and is required to follow NRS Chapter 332, and the Agenda Item Support Material says that the city, along with Nevada Health Partners, issued the RFP. If the city is going to issue an RFP, it must follow NRS Chapter 332. We also believe that the proposed contract, at least our understanding of it, as we haven't seen it, because it wasn't part of your support materials, requires tying of hospital services with third-party administrator services. We do not think that this is appropriate under the law, or under the RFP that was issued. We also have concerns about the city of Sparks municipal code provisions for the procurement process, and whether they were followed in this situation. We understand that Renown has asserted that hospital services are not required to be bid publicly under NRS Chapter 332. Our position is that third-party administrator services are not professional services, under the exception for competitive bidding, and that they must be bid competitively, and it's our understanding that they were not in this situation. And I'm reporting to you that St. Mary's has communicated with Sparks managers that St. Mary's would meet or beat any competing proposal for hospital services. Given the 10-year excellent history between St. Mary's and the city of Sparks, we would hope that the city council would consider this offer from St. Mary's.
Okay, Carrie, you're three minutes up, or up, and I apologize, you spoke under public comment. You will be able to speak again under 9.7. I'm sorry I read this wrong, so if you want to stick around and speak under 9.7, you can do that again if you'd like.
Okay, I've said what I meant to say. I appreciate the offer, and I will stick around if there are any questions.
Okay.
And also, Deborah Simon is here, if there are any questions for St. Mary's directly.
So I'll keep this, if you want to speak under 9.7, you're more than happy to.
Okay.
I'll be more than happy to let you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. Okay. Ardina, Ardina Perry. You need to spruce up on your penmanship here, dear.
Not going to bother you, great.
Yeah, you're right, I'm Italian, what can I say?
Donald Trump impersonator. The first thing I want to address is the bees and the chickens, and I'm speaking as a resident of the vistas, but not for the association and the vistas. Susan said what we had planned much better than what we had written. The short form is, what I heard from people is, we have a lot of licensed daycare centers in Sparks, and I got a lot of concerns from people about the impact on their business as a licensed daycare, if somebody slapped up an agricultural use next to it. So, let's see, I'm listening to Gina. So in addressing the urban agriculture bill, the concerns I have heard from those who are aware of it concern the abandoned apiaries, when the newness wears off, and the same with chickens. There should never be any poultry allowed on any parcel that is not at least 4,000 square foot, with all poultry areas moved to the center of the parcel. And the reason for this is, I love chickens, I grew up with chickens, they draw flies, and they chuckle, they kind of twirl around the yard, and they just chuckle, and if you like chickens, it's soothing. If you don't like chickens, you want to rip the door off the hinge. So, you know, these are small lots, and I think that, because I've heard a lot of chicken people, too, and I've invited them to come into my home, into my parcel, in the vistas, and they're coming in from their third-acre parcels, and I went, oh my God, you don't have any room here. That's true, that's true. So there's nowhere that you can do urban agriculture without doing a serious impact on contiguous parcels, in my opinion. So, and getting to the free-roaming cats and chickens, that's a combination. I got a call from a guy out in Sun Valley, who the feral cats ate his chickens, so he's talking to his commissioner about, so that could be a self-reminiscent problem if we work that right. The Feral Cat Bill, in my opinion, remains a property rights issue, and I feel that the city has been made aware of the problems with allowing others to use your land to feed cats and create health and safety issues. The county is already complicit in authorizing the use of my land by other people, and briefly, because I'm not sure about the time, okay. I know that I live in a homeowners' association, I know that most of the people behind the rostrum live in homeowners' association, and I'm behind a shield. We don't allow feeding in the vistas homeowners' association. We don't. So this doesn't really, in that sense, impact those of us in the association, but it impacts a whole lot of people that really don't have a voice, and a lot of them don't know this is going on. I was talking to an assembly person, and she goes, oh my God, those cats that are driving my husband crazy, this business, are they on purpose? I said, oh, yeah. And she's in the legislature. So I would ask, as welcoming as these people are, please don't go in and negotiate the ability for another person to use my land, or our parks, because I just don't think that's the councils to give away. Wasn't the commission's, not ours. Thank you.
Tracy Sorolos. How close did I get?
Sorolos.
Yeah. And two weeks in the homeowners' association versus city law, if a law is passed, which one trumps what in this particular issue for the homeowners' association? If the law was passed to allow these things, does the homeowners' association trump the city law on that basis? So we have an idea for them. Thank you.
You bet, sir. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Tracy.
Hi, my name is Tracy Sorolos, and I'm representing mostly my business at the time. So I'm here to support the TNR program for the feral cats. I'm speaking for my company, and we say as a business that we have feral cats, and we've had them for years, and some are less feral than others. We find them to be, strangely enough, an asset to our company. Only mostly because of the morale for the employees, and to keep the rodent population down in our area. We believe the TNR program has been beneficial not only to us, but it's an effective plan which does, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, which does reduce the future population of cats. If we remove or relocate the cats, then we would go from so-called feral problem, I would believe, into a rodent problem, and then we'd have a real potential health and safety hazard to contend with. Yes, unfortunately, the cats do interact with the at-risk species, so we, so why make them out to be the bad guys? They're not, in my opinion. If the risk of rabies and other diseases come from somewhere else, why should they be the ones to be removed or exterminated? Now, I'm not trying to throw the other species under the bus, but it seems inconceivable that cats should have to pay the price, because they're hanging out with the wrong crowd. And besides, where would there be a good place to relocate cats, that they wouldn't be subjected to other species and their diseases? As far as contact goes, from my experience, cats go out of their way to avoid people, so there's no, there shouldn't be a chance that someone should be bit unless they're initiating a certain situation, provoking it. Also, I believe that if the ordinance has passed, this could be giving people the right to start killing cats randomly, and disposing of them at their will, and not just because they're afraid of the law and the liability for stray cats and ferals to be on their property. And to me, that doesn't seem like a humane or lawful way to deal with the situation. Also, if it wasn't for the community cats, the Humane Society, most people would not be able to afford to have the animals spayed and neutered, and so this is, they're a great program, and it helps out the community in that way a lot, so we're able to have them fixed and maintained, so the, I'm getting off track here, sorry. Anyways, my last thing is, if we, we should continue to support the TNR program, and allow the system to run its course, to be a success, rather than accusing the cats of being the disease carriers, and removing and destroying them altogether, only because they reside in so-called trespass on property that they're not paying taxes on. Overall, the program will eliminate future colonies and not overpopulate our already-stressed and crowded shelters with cats that will not be lucky enough to find permanent homes. These cats didn't ask or set out to be homeless, they are just more adapted to be outdoors and within their colonies, so please reconsider the ordinance and allow them to live out their lives, remaining lives as cats.
Thank you, Tracy. Kimberly Wade?
Hi, I'm Kimberly Wade from Nevada Humane Society, and we are here in support of the Trap Neuter Return, also known as TNR program in Sparks, and we do feel as a whole that the proposed ordinance should be disapproved, therefore allowing Washoe County's Feral Cat Program to exist in Sparks. Currently, feral cats in Washoe County are not being euthanized. If this ordinance passes, the ultimate change will that these cats will be losing their lives. NHS, along with hundreds of animal groups nationwide, have proven that removing feral cats doesn't work. Catching and killing is ineffective, outdated, and cruel. TNR is truly the only humane, effective approach to care for community cats. All the cats that go through our program are spayed or neutered, vaccinated, and ear-tipped before being returned back to their home outdoors. NHS is funded by grants and donations, which enable us to provide much-needed services to local families. Most recently, we were awarded over $200,000 for 89431, and over 1,000 animals benefited from that program. Additionally, we've received over $2.5 million to fund our programs. Should this ordinance pass, the life-saving enjoyed by our community will drop below 90%, which then puts us in jeopardy for losing all of that funding, which means we will no longer be able to help the community in need. More than 300 residents of Sparks are currently involved in TNR, and by doing so, they are actively helping to reduce the population of feral cats. For the past eight years, NHS has operated and funded an aggressive spay and neuter program, and today, the result is a 37% decrease in our cat population. If the ordinance passes, the cat population will once again increase, especially if the free, privately-funded TNR services are no longer available. In concern with feral cats attracting animals who transmit rabies, the cats are vaccinated with the rabies at the time of spay or neuter, and the Washoe County Health Department reports that there are no recorded cases of rabid cats in Washoe County for several decades. In concern with the diseases that could be contracted or spread by feral cats, the CDC cites the biggest contributor to salmonella outbreaks is, in fact, our food supply. Infectious diseases can only spread from cats to humans with direct contact with the cat or its species, and ultimately, feral cats tend to stray from humans themselves. In regards to the concern on wildlife, people are truly the cause of that wildlife depletion. Studies show the overwhelming causes of wildlife and bird death are habitat loss, urbanization, pollution, and environmental degradation, all caused by people, not cats. Finally, though we do support the Feral Cat Program within Washoe County, should this ordinance pass, we want you to consider this. A substantial number of pet cats will be trapped and euthanized. Imagine the uproar from the community if this happens. The financial cost to successfully reduce the feral cat population through catch and kill will be millions upon millions of dollars. Who is going to pay for this? What is the cost of the enforcement, and is this ordinance enforceable at all? And finally, who determines if these cats are feral? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Brittany Evers?
Hi, thank you for squeezing me in, I have to go get my son from school, so I didn't know I had to fill out the form to talk to you guys. I have chickens in my yard, I have, I know lots of people who have chickens in their yard, and we love them. They don't make any more noise than the doves, that you can't get rid of, or the dog down the street, that you can't stop barking all night long. And my chickens, I don't have any roosters, my chickens only make noise when they lay an egg, which is productive to me and my family, because myself, my husband, and our three children are able to eat what they provide for us. So we really love our chickens, and we keep them clean, we scoop out their coop every week, and we then reuse that in our garden, which is great for bees, too. I didn't realize bees were not, you know, good, but they're great. They, you know, help produce our food, which a lot of people don't realize, if you don't have bees, you won't have food. So, I mean, the chicken manure helps the bees, and the plants grow, and everything, so it all kind of goes together. So I'm, you know, really want everybody to have chickens, it's great. Sure, put, like, limitations on how many you can have, no roosters, because they're, you know, awake at like five o'clock in the morning, and that's obnoxious, but, you know, the chickens are great, and we've never had any problems with rats, or mice, or, you know, I mean, there are flies, but you can put up bags to collect the flies, maybe have that be a requirement, have a bag to get the flies, so that they don't bug everybody. But other than that, I'm in support of chickens. Thank you.
That's Brittany. Charlene Hadwin?
Good afternoon. I'm Charlene Hadwin, Executive Director of the SPCA of Northern Nevada. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk today. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Attorney. The SPCA is an innovative regional leader in the responsible treatment of homeless dogs and cats, primarily through their rescue and placement in forever homes, and by promoting spaying and neutering to control pet overpopulation. The SPCA recognizes that the feral cat issue involves different kinds of stakeholders, including cat advocates, animal lovers, bird lovers, health professionals, and landowners. We encourage a collaborative approach to identify strategies that could be broadly supported while effectively facilitating a law... including cat advocates, animal lovers, bird lovers, health professionals, and landowners. We encourage a collaborative approach to identify strategies that can be broadly supported while effectively facilitating a long-term, sustainable, humane effort to reduce the presence of outdoor cats and encourage more responsible pet ownership and pet care practices. We believe that the TNR program is and should remain an important component of this overall formula. We also recognize there are many different ways to conduct TNR and believe that the strategies guiding such a program should be based on good evidence and on best practices that have been developed at a national level as well as here in the state of Nevada. The strategy should also be responsible to the reasonable concerns of a broad array of stakeholders. We have provided some information to the City Attorney's Office that we've asked that you take a look at and incorporate some of these strategies as you're considering this ordinance this afternoon. And once again, we'd like to encourage that we be part of the conversation to help guide, be part of the guiding principles to help preserve feral cats and to work together so that we do not create a large euthanasia program for these cats in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Kane?
Hi, I'm here to support the backyard chicken ordinance. I do have chickens. I've had them for four years. I have a really nice coop in my backyard. They don't make any noise like the other lady said. Excuse me, I'm nervous. Unless they lay an egg. And that can be, depending on the chicken, anywhere from 10 seconds to 30 seconds, which is a lot less than my neighbor who has a dog that barks continuously. Just barks, but it's a dog. I think you have to have a little bit of tolerance towards other people and what they, they love. I love my chickens. They don't smell. I don't have rodents. They don't wander around the yard clucking at neighbors. I, I can't explain to you how important this is to me. They're a great stress reliever for me. I come home, I watch my chickens. It's, it's, you know, I don't have much of a life, I'll admit. But I do have my chickens, so far. And I use what's called a deep litter method and it's where you put shavings in the bottom of the coop and it catches the feces and it doesn't smell. It doesn't create flies if you use this method. But like the other lady said, there are methods. You can get things from Amazon and it has a trap inside that attracts the flies and they go in there, they die. I'd really like to keep my chickens. I got them four years ago. I checked with Washoe County before I got them. Washoe County said that it was allowed. So when Sparks came to me and told me that it wasn't, I was angry, upset, freaked out that I was going to lose my chickens. I only have five chickens. That can't create an issue for a neighbor. I have almost a quarter acre of lot and they're in a little coop. I just, I don't understand what the problem is with this. So I thank you for your time and thank you for listening and I hope you pass it.
Thank you. Marnie DeGregory?
Gregory.
DeGregory, okay, I'm sorry. I got the first name right, though. I remember your email.
Right. Hi, thank you for seeing me and I am here to support the chickens. I see no reason why a person can't have two to four chickens. I see, I can understand a limit, absolutely. But I do not see how they are any louder or any dirtier than a dog in the backyard. A dog. I have two neighbors and each has a dog and they stay out night and they bark and they bark and they bark. But chickens are not that loud. They cluck like everybody's saying. They lay an egg. They sing their song and they're done. They eat bugs. They recycle. You use their manure and you have a beautiful garden out of it. So people love their chickens. Let them have them. They are, they're beneficial. There's nothing bad about them. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the speaking cards I have. Anyone else? Under number four? Pardon me?
Oh, you know, I, that was my fault. I thought the lady that was talking was Deborah Banks.
Okay, no. She's on the bottom there. Come on up. We'll find you. Okay. Go ahead, Deborah.
I have a little bit of homework here. You guys, you've gotten a very one-sided viewpoint of the whole trap neuter release, trap neuter return and monitor from the people who, and that's for the website. So a little bit of reading. I wanted to give you a little bit of time or a little bit of answers to the snippets that were on the website. These are answers to it. Also, I want to point out, there was no signature on the endow letter. So anybody could have written that letter. It's not official without a signature and there's also a typo at the bottom. We all have that one neighbor that no matter what you do, you drive them crazy. You could just start your car in the morning and you drive them crazy. If you do this zoning change against feral cats, you're going to open up feuding the likes that have never been seen since the Hatfield and McCoys. Because you always have that one neighbor that's never going to be happy. And guys, cats are allowed to roam free in Nevada. How are you going to tell whether it's a feral cat, a stray cat, or someone's pet cat? So you stop feeding cats. You stop providing shelter. What happens? Well, they're going to be hanging around garbage cans. They're going to be looking for food. They're going to be catching more wildlife because they're hungry. They're going to start procreating because nobody's spaying and neutering. Nobody's taking care of them. So you're going to have a much bigger cat problem on your hands if you just say, okay, stop doing it. Fine, stop doing it. But you're going to have a whole lot more cats and you're going to have a whole bigger problem. The other problem is, as the lady from the Nevada Humane Society stated, they will lose their funding. And I want to talk about some of the programs that the Nevada Humane Society provides. It's in your packet, but I'd like to read it into the record. Seniors for Seniors is a program that's, adoption program that matches senior citizens with senior dogs. GI Dogs, we can all, you know, say that's a great thing. Providing dogs for disabled veterans or veterans that suffer with PTSD. Pets for Life in Action. And it's, they go into a neighborhood, an underserved neighborhood, and they provide free medical service, free spay and neuter, free, free things. Here is a quote from someone. "I just can't believe Nevada Humane Society is providing these services for our community. No one comes out here to help, offer help like this. I've been calling my friends and family to come down with my pet." As we know, spaying and neuter stops abandonment because they stop the bad behaviors. Affordable spay and neuter, 20 bucks special for dogs. They have that special, $40 normally. Angel Pets, where they find forever homes for animals that have terrible medical conditions and they pay for some of the medical treatment. So they find a home and they're not euthanized just because they might have diabetes or a thyroid problem or something that's very expensive to treat. This will all go away if you pass this zoning ordinance. I'm proud of the Nevada Humane Society and the work they've done and the Washoe County Regional Animal Services. Please do not pass this zoning bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No more cards? Okay, that's the end of public comment under number four. Okay, number five?
Marjina, excuse me. I have two that I need to read into the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I won't read the entire thing. They will be put into the record, though. We have one from Mr. Mark Parelta, Executive Director, Best Friends Animal Society LA, and he is opposed to Bill Number 2695. And we have one that is from Ms. Karen Boger and she is in support of Bill 2695. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, number five, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chet.
Mr. Mayor, if you would allow me to do so, I believe it's, and I'm off my agenda now. I'm preparing a legal opinion. Agenda item 97 follows 9596, which has to do with the cessation of a contract with different entities. Depending on how the council goes on 97, it may, may not be wise to cancel those contracts before we deal with 97. In other words, if we cancel the contract, then you decide to not approve 97, now we're going to be stuck in a position where we have no contracts regarding healthcare. So if you could move 97 up before, I think it's nine...
Okay, good point. Good point, Chet. Thank you. Anyone else? So if you make a motion, please, with that amendment. Mr. Lawson?
Move the, approve the agenda by moving 9.7 right after 9.4.
Okay. Second, Mr. Schmidt? Motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the agenda as amended. Everybody want to understand the amendment? Okay. Any questions? Please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Chet. Appreciate that. Number six, 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of regular Sparks City Council meeting of September 14, 2015. Any amendments, corrections, deletions? Looking for motion. Ms. Bybee?
I'm moved to approve the minutes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the minutes of the meeting of September 14, 2015. Any further discussion? See none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, number seven, announcements, presentations, items of special interest. Number one is a proclamation, Reno Sparks Goes to College Week. Yikes, someone here to accept that? Come on up, please. You know, I hate to say anything, when I went to college, it took me more than a week.
That's not just going to college. We just want to recognize the important work that our educators do in supporting our kids and recognizing post-secondary options. And so I thank you for recognizing the week of November 2nd to the 6th as Reno Sparks Goes to College Week. And then our culminating event is the Reno College Fair on Sunday, November 8th at UNR's campus. It's a free event, so everyone is welcome to come and bring your kids and check out the post-secondary options.
Okay. Bonus fact, took me eight years. And I didn't become a lawyer or a doctor, which is a sad part.
That was kindergarten.
Yeah, kindergarten, yeah. Proclamation. Whereas the Washoe County School District Counselors in cooperation with the Western Association for College Administration, Admissions Counselors will be holding their annual college fair on Sunday, November 8th, 2015 at UNR and the Joe Crowley Student Union from 12 to 4 p.m. And whereas every year, over 2,500 students and parents attend this event to meet with admission counselors from nearly 100 colleges and universities and attend financial aid and college information workshops. And whereas the purpose of the fair is to inspire our students to further their education and to introduce them to the college search and selections processes. And whereas at the college fair, students and parents can speak directly to admission counselors, learn about the college application and financial aid processes, and ask questions about degree programs and campus offerings. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim the week of November 2nd through the 6th, 2015, as Reno Sparks Goes to College Week in and for the City of Sparks, Nevada, and encourage all students and parents to participate in this event to become more informed of the educational opportunities to secure a successful future for our area's youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is proclamation, fallen firefighter week. Chief? Okay, whereas the United States Congress and the President of the United States has designated the day of annual National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service as a day to honor firefighters and emergency services personnel who have sacrificed their lives to save others by lowering the American flag on all federal buildings to half-staff. And whereas an average of 100 firefighters courageously make the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty each year. And whereas the events of September 11, 2001 brought national attention to the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices faced by fire and emergency services personnel on a daily basis. And whereas firefighters and emergency services personnel play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in our local community. Whereas the National Memorial Service marks the beginning of and the annual fire prevention week observance. And whereas it is of major importance that we increase our efforts to reduce deaths, injuries, and property losses from fire. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, now call upon all citizens of the City of Sparks and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the day of October 4th, 2015 in recognition of the patriotic service and dedicated efforts of our fire and emergency services personnel by lowering American flags on all buildings to half-staff. I encourage appropriate services and ceremonies in which all of our citizens may participate to honor fire and emergency services personnel, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to duties have rendered invaluable service to our community and its citizens. I further call upon citizens of the City of Sparks to remember all fire and emergency personnel who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community and to pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes.
Mayor Martini, City Council Members. For the record, Tom Garrison, Sparks Fire Chief. In 2015, so far, 58 line-of-duty deaths have occurred in the United States. On August 8th, one hit particularly close to home as Michael Hallenbeck, a US Forest Service firefighter, lost his life fighting fire in Lake Tahoe. It's no secret that firefighting is dangerous. It's no secret that Sparks Fire Department is very aggressive fighting fire to prevent property loss. But even with all the risks, you can be assured that your fire staff will never believe in the notion that losing your life is just part of doing the job. We constantly adjust our operations to make sure everybody goes home safe. Now for this year, at the Pancake Breakfast this weekend, in Michael Hallenbeck's name, a portion of all the entry fees to the First Alarm 5K Run, the run that will occur that morning at the Pancake Breakfast, will be donated to the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Foundation in his name. So again, thanks for this proclamation. I know that we need to honor and respect the people who have made the ultimate sacrifice. My hope is that someday, this proclamation, we don't need to give out anymore. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I'm looking at Bob King because proclamation, Fire Prevention Week. Thanks, Bob. This looks like something we do every year, isn't it?
A couple of years in a row.
Proclamation, whereas the City of Sparks is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk for fire. And three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. And whereas home fires killed 2,755 people in the United States in 2013, according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, the fire departments in the United States respond to 369,500 home fires. and sixty-nine thousand five hundred home fires. And whereas half of home fire deaths result from fires reported at night between eleven P.M. and seven A.M., when the most, when most people are asleep. And the City of Sparks residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home. And whereas first responders for the City of Sparks are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the two thousand and fifteen Fire Prevention Week theme, hear the beep where you sleep. Great. Every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm. Efficiently or effectively services to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us time to get out safely. Now, therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October fourth through the tenth, two thousand and fifteen, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And I urge all people of the City of Sparks to install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each sleeping area, and on every level of the home, including the basement, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Sparks Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week, two thousand and fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Fire Marshal Bob King for record. Thank you very much for, once again, reading this proclamation. Yes, this is my twenty-first year here with this proclamation, but these proclamations actually started back in nineteen twenty-five. That's how long we've been doing this, been trying to spread the word out there for fire prevention in our communities. It started way back when, when, you know, we really didn't have a lot of fire prevention and we had a lot more fires out there. So, ever since then, we've been trying to spread the word. Each year, the proclamation is a little different. And unfortunately, the new theme for the next year usually comes from what happened the prior year, the most amount of fires, and then they think, okay, now we have to get out there and educate people on this, this aspect of fire prevention in communities. So, this year, the hear the beep where you sleep, every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm, dives right into the middle of our Project Safe program, which is fantastic. So, we're able to utilize this theme this year with our Project Safe program and just extend it further to get the word out. And that's what we, that's what we plan on doing this year. I know I've mentioned it before, but just for record, real quickly again, we've been into a thousand fifty-seven homes, we've installed over three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight smoke alarms, fifty-six hearing impaired devices, and six hundred and eighty-two carbon monoxide detectors because of our program that meets this theme. So, it's, it's working, we've had some saves, it's been doing a really good job. So, it's a great theme for us to work on this year. Of course, we like to, every year, we like to kick off Fire Prevention Week with a bang. And on October third, we will have our twenty-sixth annual Pancake Breakfast Open House to invite the public to our fire station, so they can come in and have a wonderful breakfast with all the firefighters and get to see the station, get tours of the fire station, get educated in many different aspects of all the services that we provide for the community while they're there. We've been told many times that don't you ever get rid of that, this open house, because people really like coming to it to learn about, you know, the different services we do. We'll have car extrication, a kitchen demo, the fire safety trailer for kids to go through, Sparky the Fire Dog. We have a puppet show that actually is put on by one of our own fire inspectors, which is a really good puppet show that spreads the word on education as well. It's just a fantastic event. It's, it's October third, from eight A.M. till noon. Our price has not changed since I've been here. We still have the same price of five dollars for adults and two dollars for children and seniors. So, it's really not meant for us to have, it's not a big fundraising event, it's meant for the public to come in and see their fire department and meet their firefighters and personnel and get to learn a lot. So, we know that we have quite a few, a few that are coming out and helping us cook the pancakes and that as well, and we really appreciate that. So, this is just a big invite to everyone that's watching, to come on out to our, our fire station and, and have a very good time that morning with the family. This year, our parking has changed, I wanted to make sure I got that out there, because of a new big development that we have on Victorian Square. We now will have our parking at the west parking lot of the Nugget, just behind RTC on the other side of the, of the freeway is the west parking lot of the Nugget. The Boys and Girls Club, once again, will be supporting us with a shuttle bus, so that's the best place to park, jump on the shuttle bus, come on over, and it just keeps going all morning, so you can jump back on it anytime you want. So, with that, I'd like to thank you very much for the proclamation.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. It's great, it's great fun. So, you know, I'm telling all the people out there, there's a lot of them out there, come out to the Pancake Breakfast and come early, because Mr. Schmidt and I will be on the griddles at eight, from eight to nine, I believe.
Yes, sir.
So, you better come out early for the best pancakes. We're-
Nine to ten.
We're veteran.
Nine to ten, they're heating up still.
I'm telling you, eight, eight to nine, I'm telling you, best pancakes. So, anyway, come out anytime till, up to noon, it's a great, great event. Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, consent items. Anybody want to pull eight one? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Moved to approve all of them, eight point one.
Let me have a second. Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee, to approve eight point one. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, general business, nine point one, presentation, discussion, and possible direction on the results of the two thousand and fifteen Publix, Public Citizen Survey. Ms. Cluett.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. For the record, I'm Kathy Cluett, Senior Admin Analyst in the City Manager's Office. And I'm here today and pleased to present the results of the two thousand and fifteen Sparks Citizen Survey. Feel free to ask questions as we're going through, it's all pretty self-explanatory. This is a phone survey that we do, this was conducted over three nights in July, up at the EOC Center, up off of Park. We actually pulled the voter database from Washoe County, which you can see how many people that we got on the list. We called over thirty percent of them. O.O.S. means out of service, so that, those were eighteen hundred, almost nineteen hundred lines of those, of those phone calls that we made, it was either out of service or they just didn't answer it anymore. So, we actually go, it takes a long time to get our five hundred and ten responses out of those sixty-four hundred phone calls. It's a pretty good response rate, and it's a ninety-five percent confidence level. So, for the number of phone calls that we make, we're pretty satisfied with in each board of who we get to respond and to get our data. The first question that we ask people is, what is your overall perception of quality of life in Sparks? You can see it's still very high, ninety-two percent of all those callers said they like being in Sparks. These were some questions about, what do they think are some of the major concerns for the city? They think growth of jobs, we're doing a really good job. Population growth, they don't think we're growing too fast, we're doing it the right amount. And for retail growth, they like the percentage of retail growth that we have here in the city.
Kathy?
Uh huh.
The growth of jobs, either I'm not seeing it correctly, but it looks like sixty-two percent says we're too slow? Is that what that says, or am I not reading the colors correctly?
That is probably... No, I think it's correct. They don't think, they think it's, they don't, yeah.
Think we're too slow in creating jobs?
Yeah. But they also, a lot of the comments were, they know that there's not a lot that personally Sparks can do about it.
Okay.
But they, they think we're, we're on the right track.
Okay.
But they, you know, everybody thinks that it's too slow.
Sure. Thank you.
Any more? These are five questions that we've been asking, for the most part, since two thousand and nine. The two that were floated to the highest this year were education in schools and traffic congestion. As a reminder, the population has been relatively flat from the survey the last time we did this, which was two years ago. Traffic congestion rose to the top as a city concern. What a lot of people, the comments that we got for education in schools were, they're very concerned about it, but they know we have very little to do with it. They know it's the school district, they know that the city cannot so far, you know, go in and do things at the school district to make a really huge impact, they know it's up to the school district, but it's a big concern for them. It floated, they're still very concerned about what's going on with the schools. Gang activity and graffiti dropped a lot. And that's what I just said, that they know we don't have any control over the education, but it is a concern for them. Most of their concerns for traffic congestion were lights. There were a lot of people in their comments that were, I sit at lights a lot, and why are they not synchronized? Why do I keep getting stopped at all of them? The next question was a new set of questions that we asked this year. It was how, concerning their neighbors and their neighborhoods. The sense of community is stronger than expected, which is something that the city can really build upon. People really do want to know their neighbors, they want to get involved in their neighborhoods, and this was true throughout all the wards. They all did have a sense of strong community, they liked their communities, and, thank goodness, overwhelmingly, a lot of them had a sense of pride in their neighborhood. This is a question that we've asked for a number of surveys in a row. We still do very well walking alone in business areas after dark, people feel very safe in the City of Sparks. Doesn't matter whether it's, you know, in their business area or in their neighborhood. And actually, from two thousand and thirteen, in being, feeling safe in your business area after dark got safer by ten percentage points, so that was a good thing. Public safety service? This has to do with police and fire. To be honest with you, I didn't pick these colors, when I did the graph, this is what it picked, which I thought was pretty funny, so I left it. People are very happy with our police and fire services. And one of the questions that was asked was, have you experienced a crime? We didn't ask that question this year, that had been a question that we'd always asked before. And one of the questions that you, where this is extrapolated from is, police, we asked them, have you had any contact, good, bad, or indifferent? It was just, have you had contact with the police? One hundred and twenty-six people said yes, and that was about twenty-five percent of all the people that were surveyed. Fire was the same question, have you had any contact with fire, whether it was good, bad, or indifferent? And it was fifty-seven police, fifty-seven contacts that they had, which was only about This set of questions was all to do with parks and recreation. In general, citizens were very protective of their neighborhood parks. It was amazing to me in a lot of the comments, people really like their neighborhood parks, they walk their dogs there, they love going there with their children and their grandchildren, and they are very protective of them if they see something they don't like. They have a tendency to really contact the Parks and Rec Department, I'm sure Tracy will, Ms. Dominguez will back me up on that one. They also, in this time of drought, there were a lot of comments made about watering and graffiti and how they really do like to watch it for us, because they're out there all the time. And they appreciate that we respond to that. We don't, might necessarily get back to them, but they can see that the graffiti has been taken care of, or watering has been changed, or trees have been taken care of, so they Overall satisfaction with the city? It's still pretty high, eighty-six percent, and this is just a general question that's asked. What is your overall satisfaction with the quality of service in the City of Sparks?
I have another question.
Uh huh.
It dropped two points since two thousand and thirteen. I was just wondering when they, when residents were talking to you, since it's dropped just a little bit, I mean, it's still a good-
Rating, but what, were there any specifics that people were specifically addressing of what they were not happy with? It, nothing jumped out in their comments. You can see that it was very high before the recession.
Could you go back one?
Sorry.
There you go.
It was very high before the recession.
Yeah.
And there's, there's a general notice of, they know that we're down a lot of employees, and they know that there just aren't as many people out there doing what they used to do before the recession, but they're still very happy with the service that they actually see and get. But to answer your question of how it dropped two points, I can't answer that, there wasn't anything specifically pointed out. Okay, thank you. And these were some of the questions that were asked after we'd asked that, you know, what's your overall quality of, how happy are you with the city services? We specifically asked about code enforcement, graffiti removal, street repair, street cleaning. Storm response is a new one, it had never been phrased that way before, so storm response, if they asked, what does that mean? We said flood control, snow removal, we grouped it all in there. If you'll remember, when this survey was done, it was during when all those floods were going on and we were having all the rain, and so people were still pretty high on the fact that we were, that Sparks was being very proactive after the flooding. And as that points out, forgot to have more there. Graffiti removal, it was seen as a problem, has really dropped, it dropped fifteen percent. So, they're not seeing as much graffiti, and they're, they are happy with our services of getting rid of the graffiti that they do report. Everybody's very happy with our parks. Passive Interactors are walking and jogging, those are the two highest uses that our parks get from people. The next question we asked was, if you'd ever contacted the city? This is a new question for the survey. There were five hundred and ten respondents all over for the entire survey, one hundred and seventeen people said they had contacted the city for something. We weren't specific about what it was that you contacted them for. But if you contacted the city, was the city helpful with the resolution? Those are the numbers that you're seeing. So, overall, the city, one hundred and seventeen contacted, seventy-one were very helpful or thought the city was helpful with the resolution, which is a sixty-one percent. So, we can definitely probably build on that. Yes?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a new question.
Mm-hmm.
And I know it requires a little more detail, but I'm going to tie it back to Councilwoman Bybee's question, you know, trying to look at this and say, one hundred and seventeen people complained, and seventy-one felt that the resolution, that the city was helpful in the resolution, so that means forty-some people, well, forty-six people have said the city was not helpful in the resolution. Is there a way, next year on the survey, or two years, whenever we do it, as a side note, to be able to drill down at that point? Because I think that starts developing into departmental problems, and we can start identifying solutions if we know what the problem is, you know, why, why does almost half, forty percent of the people think that the city was not helpful in dealing with their issue?
And that's a good question, and we were trying to make it general and just not have a litany of supposed complaints. I have to be honest, a lot of these were not even complaints, they were that they had contacted the city to report a pothole, or they contacted customer service. And some of those answers that you're looking for, I think we can pull that off of the website, when people go in and ask questions on the website.
I just think a simple follow-up question to go, that can go in the notes is, what was the issue that you, you don't have to-
That you were not satisfied.
To go into detail, just what was the issue? If it's something as simple as potholes, then we know that, okay, you know, sixty percent of our issues are potholes, and those are being taken care of. our issues are potholes, and those are being taken care of. If we're having development issues, building issues, code enforcement issues, a really nasty, you know, engagement with the city, those are things that I think, you know, one or two questions afterwards can pick on up. And, because, you know, this right here of all the slides is the one that concerns me the most.
Okay.
And because we're, we have 40% of our people who contact the city for whatever reason, saying, "We were not helpful in the situation." And I don't know if you meant to phrase the question that way or not, but that means that 40% of our issues are not resolved. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Kathy, does that mean 61% of the people contacted or were contacted? What does that mean exactly?
It's 61% felt that we were helpful.
That we're helpful, okay.
With whatever it was that they had a question about.
So this, this chart, the same one he's talking about, is a little bit hard. Because, let's take Ward 1, no, I'll take Ward 3. Yeah, I'm sorry. Ward 3, 63% of the respondents contacted the city. 12 out of 19.
Were happy with the resolution.
Were happy with it, yeah. I mean, it just looks like 63, 55, 54 is all down the bottom, but on this one chart, 60 would be way up here. It doesn't really matter where the, and I'm just, you know, if you have 19 people that you contacted, that would be at the top of the chart. You follow me?
No.
Okay, so.
Down on the left is the number of people.
No, I get that. I'm just saying that this 63% is still 63%, whether it's 63 out of 100 or 12 out of 19. All I'm saying is, that, the line you have showing there is 20%.
Yeah, it's 20 people.
20 people.
Right. That's the number of people.
Okay.
The left is the number of people.
Oh, just shut up then.
Sorry.
Kathy?
Moving on, kindergarten. Go ahead, go ahead.
Follow up on that, the people, these are people who contacted the city, but on this it says, "You contacted the city to resolve a problem." So they weren't people who were just calling to inquire about a business license, or what our regulations were, what our hours were, or how to volunteer. They were specifically asked, "Did you contact to resolve a problem?" We know there was a problem that they were, that's separate from just a regular contact. Is that right?
Yes, and we did not drill down to what the problem was.
Okay, okay.
So I, we don't know.
But it was an issue that was, they were looking for a resolution?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
These are, excuse me, this, this is a question that we've always asked since 2009. Pretty self-explanatory. Any questions about attending a government meeting or watching the government meeting?
Really surprising. We're not doing a better job.
You're, you're looking, of course, over six years. We, we barely moved that needle. I think that's something IT's got to really take a look at here, because we're not, our cost of doing business is exactly the same as it was six years ago in trying to handle issues instead of using technology to help promote things. That, that is an eye-opener.
The next one says, how do you conduct your businesses?
Thank you. I know, just nothing was reported.
Especially go to the next slide. And some of the comments that we did get about watching the meetings was that people said they would actually like to watch them, but they don't have either access to cable or they can't afford it. So they can't watch it. This was a new question, which is sort of following up on the internet question. This is how people said they would prefer to get information about the city. I was a little surprised that the sewer bill was that low, because I figured everybody got it, so I thought maybe they would, you know, want to read things on there. The internet and the newspaper were the top two. Snail mail was close behind. Knowing the age dispersment of the survey takers, which is coming up in the next slide, it was still surprising that no one mentioned Twitter as a way to keep up with city information. There wasn't one response of yes for that.
It doesn't surprise me at all.
Yeah, well, you're not.
What's a Twitter?
Yeah. How do I, how do I, how do I get to be a Twitter?
That would be a tweet. But that's okay.
Julie and I will explain that later.
These are two questions that we have asked for years as well. Consolidated, and the question is actually, because I've had somebody wanted to know specifically what the question was for this, how it was asked. And the question for consolidated government was just yes or no. Would you consider and support having one consolidated government for all of Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County? So it was just a yes or no. Or don't answer, but it was yes or no. If they asked, "What do you mean by all?", the response was, "This would include fire, police, parks, recreation, sewer, street maintenance." And then the question for sustainability was, "Are sustainability, green technology, and environmental issues important to you?" And that keeps going up. And two of the last questions that we'd always asked people, these two slides are fairly self-explanatory. That lived in Sparks for 11 to 20 years, that's going up a little bit compared to what it used to be. And we do and continue to have an older demographic. But what a lot of the comments were, "I've lived in Sparks a long time. I would never move. I just got here a little while ago. I'm never moving. I actually lived here, moved to Reno, couldn't wait to come back to Sparks." And you'll see that in the comments that you got in your board printouts. People are very happy when they, when they get to Sparks. They really like the way we run the city. So this doesn't happen by just one person. It's, we actually hire 14 staff to come in. I sit all three nights and make phone calls as well. It's conducted over the three weeknights. We do it up at the EOC because they have computers and the phones, and so it's pretty easy to set this thing up and get it going. Thank you, kudos to Rich Brown, Senior Systems Analyst. He actually designed this whole entire system. He takes that, the voter database, scrambles it, and it's actually very, very interesting when this, when this goes on. Somebody's on the computer, and they hit the enter key, and up comes their screen, and up comes their phone number, and it's already been parceled out by ward. And the system just sits there and keeps track, and it chugs through it. And then as soon as it hits 100 callers, successful calls for a ward, it stops dialing that entire ward. And it just drops to the next four, then the three, then two, then one. So it's actually very interesting how it works, and it's, it's pretty, it's pretty cool. By the last night, the last four people that are on the phone, everybody's just like, "Yay!", because they know they finally hit the numbers. Because literally, all the computers lock up. They won't even give you anything else. It knows it's done. So it's pretty cool.
Great. And the question is, Julia Ratty?
Do you know, the phone numbers that it's generating, are they only fixed lines, or do they include cell phone numbers?
They include cell phone.
Thanks.
And the first question that's asked, actually, when the screen comes up, is, "Do you still live in Sparks? And are you over 18?" So if either one of those are a no, we don't go forward with the call.
Mr. Lawson?
So how do you get their cell phone numbers?
If they've put it in when they've registered to vote. That's where the numbers come from.
So that's the only way. I think for the future, we need to look at some other ways to reach out. It's obviously quite slanted to the older generations. And with our changing demographics and impending, we're going to have to find other ways to contact our citizens, I think, than just a phone call. You can't find my kids at all.
Are they registered to vote in the City of Sparks? Because if they are, we can find them.
You can, but you're not.
They would show up on the list.
But you're not going to get a phone number for them.
Because they didn't put it.
Exactly. So they protect their cell phone number. I, I think we're missing a huge demographic there. But something to consider for next year.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks Kathy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, 9.2, discussion and possible approval for payment of an annual support from the City of Sparks to the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada for fiscal year 2015-16 in the amount of $100,000. Who's doing this? Jeff? Okay, go ahead.
So Jeff Kronk, Acting City Manager for the Record. This, I don't have a presentation. This was included in the budget. This is the $100,000 contribution to EDON for fiscal, for the current fiscal year. That was increased from the prior two years, which was at the level of $80,000 for each year. So it was increased to $100,000, and, and that was, that's in the approved budget. And with that, I'll have, take any questions.
Questions? Mr. Lawson?
I just want to say thank you for the council for approving this, or putting it in the budget. Haven't approved it yet, but EDON is doing a wonderful job in our area, and we're going to experience some growth. It's going to be difficult for us, but it's better to have too much than not enough, and we'll overcome the challenges as they go forward. EDON has, has enough visitations and enough other companies that are, that the job count is more than what Switch and Tesla provide together. So we're looking at a doubling of just those two companies in the ancillary businesses that come with it. And if you haven't heard about Switch, take the time. We're going to have some Fortune 100 companies that are going to be right here in our region, and they're going to have small offices and stuff. So we're going to have some great opportunity to become a bedroom community to Silicon Valley. And we're working on a few other things in that area to make some travel a little bit easier. So, pretty proud to work with EDON, and pretty proud to be our representative from Sparks.
Questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve payment for the city's annual support of EDON for fiscal year 2015-2016 in the amount of $100,000.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Bybee and a second by Mr. Smith to approve 9.2, the EDON contribution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next, 9.3, consideration and possible approval of a contract with RAD Strategies in the amount of $100,000 to assist the city with the public outreach portion of the comprehensive plan update. Karen, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Councilor. I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you today is a consideration and possible approval of a contract with RAD Strategies in the amount of $100,000 to assist the city with our public outreach portion of the comprehensive plan update. The adopted strategy, strategic plan for the city for fiscal years 2016 to 2021, the objective 3.1 is to complete and update the city's comprehensive plan by fiscal year 2017. And the current budget has earmarked $100,000 for the completion of that comprehensive plan. A key, a key component of the comprehensive plan update is the public outreach and engaging the citizens of Sparks. Staff envisions using a mix of traditional community workshops, forming community stakeholder and agency advisory groups, working with the city stakeholders, and utilizing digital tools and media. Excuse me. Staff is recommending hiring a consultant to assist the city in utilizing new digital tools, including social media and survey methods. The anticipated expectation is to have a broadened public participation. The goal is to have a collaborative decision-making process resulting in a better comprehensive plan that establishes policies for the city's operations and that the city council and city employees can use to guide and develop our city. At the end of June 2015, the city issued a request for proposals to solicit and select a consultant to assist the city staff with the public outreach component of our master plan update, our comprehensive plan update. The city received 11 responses from consultants all around the United States. Based on review criteria, the city staff committee members interviewed four consultants. The committee unanimously recommends that the contract be awarded to RAD Strategies. RAD Strategies is a local firm that has more than 30 years of experience working in Nevada and has been working with the City of Sparks since 2009 on our branding campaign and also their smartphone app. RAD Strategy has the knowledge and experience to assist Sparks to engage the public beyond traditional public meetings, which is a critical component of a comprehensive plan. RAD Strategies also in attendance today if you have any specific questions for them. The committee unanimously recommends to city council that the contract be awarded to RAD Strategies in the amount of $100,000. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
I move to approve the contract in the amount of $100,000 to provide professional services to RAD Strategies.
Second, Ms. Bybee.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Bybee to approve the RAD Strategies contract. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Karen.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. 9.4 is consideration and possible direction to staff to seek financing options for construction of Phase 3 of the North Truckee Drain Relocation Project. You're too close. Let me take my glasses off. Okay, I see. Mr. Martini, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Martini, Members of Council. John Martini, city engineer for the record here today to ask the council's direction with regard to researching financing options to finance the last phase of the North Truckee Drain. In my staff report, I gave the council a timeline going all the way back to 2008 when the river flood fee was passed by ordinance. Collections began in April of 2008. It is kept in a separate account uniquely called the River Flood Account. In late 2013, this council approved a contract Q&amp;D for the first phase. Then in March of 2014, you approved a change order, which was essentially the second phase. What is left is about 3,750 lineal feet of, of box culvert to be constructed roughly from Greg Street Vista Boulevard off-ramp where we left it, up around, heading towards Sparks Boulevard, tying into where the North Truckee Drain comes through. Right now, there is a figure in your staff report. Thanks, Rich. So, this is Vista Boulevard here, Interstate 80. The blue line uniquely is the Truckee River. The little green piece was what you approved for Phase 2 construction. The red piece that got us under, if you remember, the elevated kind of on-ramp of Greg Street heading up onto Vista Boulevard. We're around the bend. Now we need to construct this last piece, and this is where the North Truckee Drain currently comes through Interstate 80. We will tie the, both the main drain and the overflow drain to the box structure. Staff anticipates it's going to cost about $25 million to finish this last phase. Currently, the river flood account has about seven, six, six and a half, seven million. So we need to finance the difference, somewhere around 20 million, I'm estimating. It is a policy decision. You're not making a decision to award a contract or even construct it this year. We did include it in the fiscal '16 budget, of which we're currently in now. We did have a placeholder in there for 25 million. This, this direction today is sought to either go forward and have our illustrious acting city manager today, Finance Director, Mr. Kronk, investigate terms, whether it's bonding, short-term loan, whatever instrument is out there that would best suit us. If the council does not choose to have us investigate financing, the money will continue to come in. It's about $3 million a year. So in about eight years, maybe nine years, we would have enough to finish this construction. That's all I have, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And John, I'll get you a moment. I'll go ahead and talk to Jeff first. What, what are we looking like on timeframes? We, we gave the approval today to start to bring back some interest rate proposals and stuff to the council. What kind of timeframe are we looking at for this?
Jeff Kronk, Acting City Manager/Financial Services Director/whatever. It kind of depends on the market right now. So what we'll do is we'll take direction today and actually start beating the bushes, if you will. So it's, since it's So it's, since it's a relatively, you know, large amount that we collect, about $3 million a year, as Mr. Martini said there, you know, we'll probably look at shorter term, you know, to start. But certainly, we're going to look at, you know, potential 20-year issuances through the state. The SRF loans often run on a 20-year basis. So we're going to see what's out there, honestly. But we wanted to take this step first and get approval and see if this is even the direction we want to go.
Do you, do you think by the end of the year, we would have a package?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah, I think, I think that's our goal is that we will, we'll know whether it's through the state, you know, we'll, we'll get it on their, on their docket and see if they're interested or if there's other avenues. But there's processes we'd have to go through as far as getting through the debt management commission and so forth. So, but I don't see why this would be the, by the end of the year. And I believe we'd be looking, what, as early as next spring as a time of construction? Or that's way open?
Well, you are speaking to an engineer, so find me the money and we'll build it.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's going to go exactly to my point is that, you know, good bid period, you know, prices are rising pretty rapidly with engineering work. The more the businesses that move here, the higher the costs you're getting to do business. And so that's one cost analysis that's not taken in place over the, the boom. Working backwards, best time to get this is winter time, probably out on the market by February. Would you, would you agree with that? You know, January, February, get it, get the bid package out there to get ready to roll March or April on this thing?
If not sooner, yes.
Okay, because I'm looking for the best value. Then, you know, it's, it's going to be dead in winter time. Hopefully, we can go ahead and get some good values on it. Does that work in your timeframe to get him to be able to allow John to get a package by January out to bid?
My preference would be to have a bid hit late March.
Just that late a season?
Giving us time, giving us enough time to, we, if you will recall Councilman Schmidt, we still have two easements to procure.
Yeah.
We have some permitting and we have some railroad negotiations.
I have faith you're going to get that done very quickly.
Thank you, sir.
Now, with that in mind, we do, I think that with the income stream that we've developed and proven over the years, $3 million a year, I, I feel very confident that we're going to get one heck of a good interest rate on it because we could, we should be able to pay this thing off very, very quickly. You know, it's a proven income stream. We're using it. With that said, let's, let's, could we be working on Plan B? You know, how much will 6 million get us of this thing right now? Instead of 6 million and sitting in the bank getting us 1% interest? Or half percent? Quarter? Are we getting a quarter percent interest on our money? You know, how much of that can we do, can we develop a Phase 4 and do Phase 3 in a thousand feet of it?
Councilman Schmidt, my concern would be this. I understand what you're saying. The mow cost for that tracked equipment to build it, as you saw Q and D's construction, is very expensive to mow. We could look at smaller increments, but I think in comparison, if you will bang for the buck, we're better to wait a bit. And, and I would look at a $12 million setup, 10 to 12. I don't think 6 buys us much with regard to what it costs to get the contractor to get set up.
I'm a little concerned on the Fed Reserve meeting in December, what that's going to produce and what that may do to the market and drive things around. So I would like to, I would prefer going with the finances off to get this thing on the market, get this thing up and done. You know, we're, we're rolling dice this winter time. You know, I mean, I think we're rolling dice and I think the sooner we get this better off. And my, I, I think the prudent thing to do is to get the bond, get this thing paid for and get this thing rolling so we don't go through another winter time with a chance of a flood happening. So that's my, my two cents. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will complete the project?
Yes.
It will. How do we get underneath the freeway?
It's already through. We did that to 2007.
I thought the culvert ended right there at the freeway.
We will attach to it.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. You have to go underneath there. I, I think it's important to note that if we have a 12 million or $18 million bond, that will be assumed by the flood project once we get everything going. We will lose that.
Absolutely. Should their fee structure, that's a good point that I did not include in my staff report. The JPA, Joint Powers Agreement, should in, while we're doing this, after the, the, if, whatever financing mechanism we use, if full approval of the, the flood fee regionally is done, they will assume this debt. Our fee, basically the 541 a month, everybody talks about that, will be assumed or changed by the Flood Management Authority and it will leave our system and they will assume the debt.
The, the 541 will go away and there'll be a new fee that will be replaced for everybody in Marshall County?
Yes.
Thank you. I think we need to get this done. That's my two cents worth.
Yesterday.
Yeah, this, we've got it, if it floods now, the North Truckee Drain does is no, no good at all.
Don't you do that.
So, thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, I'm going to concur. We need to get it finished, get it done. People are evaluating their relocation to our industrial area based on this project getting done. Faster we get it done, the better it is for us all the way around.
Ms. Bybee?
A quick question. What is the, once we start construction, how long will it take to complete? What are you estimating?
I would put this one at probably about a year to 15 months.
Okay. Thank you.
From start to finish.
Whoops. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one nice comment by Karen. Mr. Schmidt?
Brought it up, you know, and I've spoken to city manager about this and I think it's imperative that we look at it at an emergency plan this winter time. Some way to be able to use existing what we have, whether it's having equipment on standby or rental. We got to rent it for four months over the winter time to prepare for it. I, I just think that, you know, there's too many cards are lining on up against us right now and that, you know, we've spent, you know, what, 14, 15 million dollars already on this thing. And I don't want anybody to say we spent 15 million dollars for nothing. And I know 15 months worth of construction time is a long time. Can't do anything in this winter time about it. It is what it is. Let's just try to have a good emergency plan in place in case we, we get hit with something. And good job to staff for, you know, getting this far in the project. It's, it's something that, you know, 97, the flood happened, you know, most of the entities aren't doing a whole heck of a lot about it. We decided this was our number one project to get it done and we're going to get it done. So with that, I'd be more than happy to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to direct staff to seek financing options for construction of Phase 3 of the North Truckee Drain realignment project.
The second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Comment by me, there's a first by Mr. Schmidt, second by Mr. Lawson. Imperative we get this done, should have been done. I wish we could have done it, whatever, 1955, when I saw the first flood here, okay? But we, we need to get this done, so it's good stuff. Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Please vote. If you're not in favor, don't vote. Uh, Charlie, push, I'm sorry. Passed unanimously. Thanks, John. Good job. Okay, Ms. Severson, 9.7, we're going to take now. Consideration, discussion and possible approval to participate in a, an agreement negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with Renown Medical Center and Hometown Health, Perforation and Group Hospital Network and third-party administration.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead, run. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of this morning's letter that we received and my, I was flying all morning long today to get, to get back to Sparks. I'm going to be choosing that I want, I need to abstain from this item. There's a possibility that I may have a conflict of interest. I haven't had enough time to get legal opinions on this thing today to whether I have conflict of interest and the possible heading into litigation. And so I'm going to be taking the safer route right now on this and I'm going to be taking a, abstaining from listening or voting on this item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And, Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Ratty asked me whether or not you could consider all three of these agenda items together, at least discuss them, voting on them separately. She indicated that there was some information relating to formerly 95 and 96 that might help her in her consideration of this particular agenda item. Seeing that all three agenda items are somewhat intermixed and that you may have some common issues, if, if that's the desire of the city council to discuss all three at the same time.
Okay.
And then ultimately bode on this first and then the other two having to do with the termination of the contracts, that's legally permissible.
Okay, no problem. We've done it in the past. It's good to have the attorney weigh in so we know we're legal and if we're not, we can blame him, right?
That's what I'm here for.
That's what your job is, right?
That's right.
It's what you get the big bucks for. Okay, we're going to go ahead and discuss all three questions. You can make your presentation on all three. Then we'll have questions, whatever, on all three and then we'll vote separately on all three. Okay? Go ahead, Chris.
Good with me. Mayor and city council, Chris Severson, administrative services director for the record. Hospital coverage for the City of Sparks has for many years been contracted with St. Mary's Hospital through a participation agreement with the Nevada Health Partners. The current contract expires December 31, 2015. Nevada Health Partners is comprised of public and private employers who work together to negotiate contracts with medical providers to provide services using a greater economy of scale than could be achieved by individual employers. Given the changing landscape of hospital management in the region, with both Renown and St. Mary's experiencing ownership or management changes, the decision was made by NHP to put out an RFP for hospital services. Early discussions indicated that both hospitals were open to these discussions. To bring objectivity to the process, NHP contracted with Darren Severson, not related, Severson, an independent contractor to develop an RFP as well as to prepare an independent financial analysis of both proposals. Each hospital was asked to provide an option that would allow a dual hospital option. So as you know, we've had a single hospital option, but it was a desire to have both. Unfortunately, only Renown formally responded to the RFP and provided an option for a dual hospital scenario. St. Mary's chose to present their proposal as a renewal of the existing contract. St. Mary's also presented their renewal as an exclusive, as exclusive, and were not interested in a dual hospital proposal. Following an extensive review of both proposals, the clear choice was with Renown. NHP, as a result of these negotiations, finalized a contract with Renown end of June, first part of July. As part of the negotiations, Renown offered several options, including options on preferred provider networks as well as third-party administration services. It should be noted that TPA services were provided as an à la carte option and was not a part of the initial decision to contract with Renown. Only after the decision was made to move to hospital services were network and TPA services considered individually by each employer participating. Also included in the Renown agreement is the ability to use our own Northern Nevada Medical Center as a preferred provider.
Good.
I'm just going to try to help with acronyms.
Yes, I'm sorry. What is TPA?
Third-party administrator.
Thank you.
They, claims processors, I think. Well, they do a lot more than that, but primarily third-party administrators, sorry. Also included in the Renown agreement was the ability to use our own Northern Nevada Medical Center as a preferred provider as well as Carson Tahoe Medical, Regional Medical Center. As a self-funded employer with limited ability to impact health costs through our group health insurance committee, it is important to take the opportunities as they are presented. The financial savings by using the all-in approach using the Hometown Health Provider Network and Partners TPA as well as the hospital contracting will save the city in excess of $200,000 per year. These savings are a combination of a hospital, TPA and network savings. In addition, as part of the three-year contract, there will be a 2% minimum and 5% maximum inflator for hospital services tied to medical CPI after the first year. This is in effect a cap on hospital inflationary costs. The city is sensitive to employees who are currently with St. Mary's and who will be encouraged to switch to Renown. Hometown Health has committed to working with all members to help them navigate through this transition. There will be a dedicated line that employees can call to seek help in finding a new doctor, ask questions, or just to make sure they are accessing the network correctly. Working with Hometown Health to address what this change will mean in terms of disruption to members, it has been verified that approximately 91% of the doctors currently utilized by our members are also a member of the Hometown Health Network of Providers. Management of Northern Nevada Medical Center have asked the city to urge inclusion of contracted Northern Nevada Medical Group physicians, which we have requested of Renown. Hometown Health also assessed the possibility of contracting with independent providers that are heavily utilized by our members to see if they may be brought into the provider network as well. With regards to retirees or dependents living outside the local area, a panel of providers that are currently accessed through St. Mary's network are the same network for Hometown Health, so there will be no need to switch providers. As recently as today, St. Mary's has brought into question the RFP process, confidentiality of the hospital contract and the financial analysis. It should be noted that first of all, what you're being asked to do today is to authorize the city manager to execute a participation agreement with Nevada Health Partners. This allows us to benefit from the contract negotiated between Renown and Nevada Health Partners. This action is authorized under NRS 287010, 287015 and 287020, which gives the governing body the ability to, and I'm going to quote NRS because I don't want to ad lib, "to secure group health, life or workers' compensation insurance for its officers and employees and their dependents, participate as a member of a nonprofit cooperative association or nonprofit corporation that has been established in the state to secure such insurance for its members from an insured licensed, licensed pursuant," tongue tied, "to the provisions of Title 57 of NRS. In addition to provide provisions, in addition to the provisions of Paragraph C, participate as a member of a nonprofit cooperative association or nonprofit corporation that has been established in the state to, one, facilitate contractual arrangements for the provision of medical services to its members, officers and employees and their dependents and for related administrative services; and, two, procure health-related information and disseminate that information to its members, officers, employees and their dependents," end quote. So by us contracting with Nevada Health Partners, the state law does provide that we can do that, that we can use that as a process to obtain our insurance. In regards to confidentiality, the contract between Renown and NHP is confidential as according to the hospital, it contains proprietary information, including rates. It should be noted that St. Mary's has also required that all rates be confidential in the past and we have not to date brought a hospital contract before council for approval. St. Mary's has asserted that they will meet or beat the offer made by the chosen organization. This statement itself would not fall into any semblance of recognized bid process. As the decision by Nevada Health Partners to contract with Renown last July, this is simply too little, too late. The decision to move hospital services, provider networks and third-party administrative services is not taken lightly. The recommendation to participate in the hospital contract through Nevada Health Partners comes with a belief at this time, Renown presents a better financial decision as well as forging a new partnership. Today, I have in the audience Tony Sloanum, CEO of Renown, Ty Winfield, Vice President of Renown, and Heather Reimer, Sales Manager of Renown. Also in attendance is Larry Harvey, current President of Nevada Health Partners, and Darren Severson, the independent contractor that helped us work through the RFP and financial analysis. Dan Marin has also weighed in on some of the RFP questioning and certainly our legal counsel. So I'm prepared to answer any of your questions or to ask those in attendance to answer any of your questions as well.
Okay, questions? No questions? Ms. Ratty?
So, so first, first thing to say is that we haven't redone a health contract since 2006. So for at least three of us on the dais, this is the first time we've ever been through this sort of a process. So I just would, would like to say that this is not something that we do on a routine basis, just to put that on the record. So the reason I wanted to open up all three at the same time is I wanted to understand our past process and how it compares to this process. So the nonprofit group referred to as group in the agreement, were they a part of the process in 2006?
Yes.
And so the contract that we are canceling, it says that we're canceling, canceling the contract with CDS, which is the third-party administrator, but we're also contract, canceling the contract with?
UHN.
UHN.
Yes. For the record, third-party administrative services have been a separate, they are not negotiated through Nevada Health Partners.
Okay. Take those off the table.
So they are, so they are an independent decision.
And then therefore, that contract would be public?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to the confidentiality questions.
Okay.
So perhaps Renown legal counsel could answer that. I don't know.
Okay, so, but setting that aside.
I know that I signed a confidentiality agreement for hospital rates and so that's the part that I can't disclose.
Okay. So then the, the portion that is with UHS?
UHN.
UHN.
And CDS, that's okay. Acronyms will be the death of us.
It's all going to make sense here soon, I'm sure. So the part- So, the portion that is with UHS?
UHN.
And, darn, UHN is direct with the provider?
Yes.
But that contract was not public in the last round?
You know, I would have to go back and look at it, Julie. I honestly don't recall if the contracts were part of. It has been my understanding, and perhaps Mr. Maron can shed some light, I'm not sure, but I know that the hospital contracts have not ever come. I believe that we have not brought contracts for CDS or UHN to this body before because they are professional services contracts.
And therein lies my question. So, why would we, so in the prior situation, we are canceling a contract that in theory never came before us because we had a participation agreement with the group, not with UHN. Now, we're saying Renown's isn't coming before us because we have it with the group. It almost feels like we should have been canceling the agreement that we had with the group that led us to St. Mary's as opposed to with UHN directly.
The contract with St. Mary's expires on its own on the 31st of December. So, we don't, there's no need to cancel that. The contract on TPA and UHN are on a little bit different cycle. And I apologize, I didn't bring that cycle with me. So, it would necessitate if we're going to change our TPA and provider networks, canceling those mid-contract.
And just so that we're clear, there's, and I apologize, but health insurance is one of the most complex things that we do. So, apologize if it's a little bit difficult for even me to follow and certainly try to make sure that everybody can follow. There's three things. There's the third-party administrator, there's the health?
Network.
Network, and then there's the?
Hospitals.
Hospitals. So, those are three separate things. Okay.
Dan Maron, here at Contracts and Risk Manager for the record. We sought to structure this staff report the same way that we do our annual renewal of property insurance and other insurance vehicles that we do in that we are asking the council for authorization to go forward based upon the numbers that we have. The ultimate execution of whatever documents may be required by the insurers and the providers is done downstream once the application period is done, once, in this case, the participation agreement is done. We'd have to go back and look at the staff report for the last time the council addressed this in terms of looking at what exactly was presented to you. The nature of the report before you today is all about authorizing the city manager to go forward and execute what agreements need to be done. In terms of the termination of the agreement, it's our understanding from the city attorney's office that if the city council approved the first contract, only they can terminate the contract. So, it can't be done at the staff level, and that's why you're seeing that as part of this action today.
So, you see my quandary, that when we did it the last time, it appears, or at least you're asking us to terminate a contract directly with the provider, not with the nonprofit. And if we were negotiating directly with the provider, then does that become a public document?
If we were negotiating with the provider and the provider is asking us to enter into a contract as the City of Sparks, it would be a public document if we were gonna ask you to approve it. The reason that, now I'm just speculating here, the reason that you're not being provided a contract with CDS or what was the other one?
UHN.
UHN. Is that the contract's already been presented to the city council. City council's already approved it. Now, it may not have been during your tenure, but the city council reviewed the contract and approved it. We are not asking you to approve a contract this time. So, in that regard, there's real no legal necessity that you be provided with those particular contracts that the staff is asking you now to rescind. Nevertheless, if it's something that falls within Nevada law as a public document, I certainly wouldn't have any problems advising the staff to provide it to you at this point in time. But, again, when we, we are not entering into a contract with the provider. We are simply participating with Nevada Health Partners, Health Services, or whatever we got here.
Nevada Health Partners, you got it right.
Nevada Health Partners, who has the contract. That contract is privileged, declared by Nevada law, to be confidential
And then I'll just ask one follow-up question and then let somebody else go for a bit. Do you have, we do have any way of knowing if Nevada law has changed since the last time we did a process?
You mean?
The revised statutes that allows for that confidentiality?
Well, this was, this was, I would have no reason to believe that Nevada law has changed to dramatically change or otherwise affect the legal advice I just gave to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
So, I just wanna get this straight in my head. St. Mary's chose not to bid?
St. Mary's responded. St. Mary's responded that they would not respond to the RFP, but instead chose to give us their rates as a contract extension for exclusive hospital network services, hospital provider services.
But then turned around and said, "We'll match or beat whatever you get."
That's correct. Just in the last couple of days.
I find that disingenuous at best.
In the last couple of days.
And then let me ask another question of the law. Do they even have any standing to talk to us about this since they didn't bid the RFP?
We didn't send, to answer your question, no. I don't believe that they do have standing.
Two comments in their letter that was sent just hours before the city council meeting.
I haven't seen the letter.
Well, I just barely got a chance to see it myself. But they protested and they've objected to the approval of the agreement. It's my opinion that St. Mary's has neither standing, any type of capacity to, anybody can object to anything.
Yeah.
But they certainly can't, it's kind of framed as in a formal bid protest and because, A, the City of Sparks never sent out a bid, and B, because they were never a bidder, they really cannot employ the bid protest procedures under Nevada law.
Then my final question is, is there a timeframe that we need to cancel these other contracts within? Are we?
Yes, there's 90 days.
So, 90 days?
So, we're in that, would begin October 1st.
Okay, so it is kind of imperative we get this. And I wanna give our city attorney the time, if he needs to, to make sure we're making the right decision. I don't wanna get sued over something silly. But, in my mind, if you don't bid a contract, you have no standing. I mean, it's not the way it works out in the real world. It shouldn't work in government that way.
My question, Chad, is doesn't, no reason why they can't?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, and I'm not.
And it's not in the form of a protest or whatever, but they can come and make public comment against whatever we're trying to do.
Absolutely, they have every right, as any other person. The problem is, is that as far as legal standing goes, and I believe that's what Councilman Lawson's question was.
And I agree with one thing that Ed said, too. I mean, I would like to be able to, somebody make a bid on a contract, and I can look at it and see what it is and then come in and undercut them. I mean, I'd love to be able to do that. Is that the way it works here? I'm sorry. Maybe.
So, Chris, let me try to be clear on kind of the history of how we've done our health insurance in the past. Is it something that we put out an RFP to, or has it been several years since we've done this? And the reason we're doing it is because Nevada Health Partners made the change, and that's who we've been working with? So, in the past, whatever Nevada Health Partners, we just kept whatever they had, and the RFP was required because they were making the change? Kind of, I'm looking historically to how we got here today and how often this might be happening as we move into the future.
My understanding, and this predates my time with the city, was that the city has been a member of Nevada Health Partners for approximately 20 years. Mr. Harvey is the expert on the timing. But since that time, NHP, Nevada Health Partners, has gone out for bid or thought about going out for bid or has talked to different, depends on the scenario. There were times when we really had no interest in entertaining a different hospital system than St. Mary's. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, the climate is different now. It seems different now. We've got different management at Renown, we have different ownership at St. Mary's, and we thought maybe it was the time for a dual hospital system. So, it seemed the perfect time to go out to an RFP. I personally can't remember when we've gone out to RFP for hospital services or Nevada Health Partners has gone on RFP for hospital services for quite some time.
And just to follow up on that. I think that, obviously, in today's environment, the cost of healthcare is something that is one of the biggest expenses that everyone personally that we have, that are companies, that are city government and federal government, I mean, all of this are facing, you know, extraordinary, exorbitant healthcare costs. And I think whatever we can do to minimize those costs, to manage them effectively, to use our healthcare system the best we can because the cost is crippling. I mean, for, especially with, you know, catastrophic issues, but even everyday healthcare. And whatever $200,000 a year doesn't sound like a lot, but it is. It's still $200,000. And I think the more that we can do to be proactive to save the city money, which in essence is the taxpayers' money, is important for us to do. Thank you.
Okay, add some public comment cards, so we can do that part now. I, Ms. Parker, I said I would allow you to speak again if you'd like. So, come on ahead and speak again. You have three minutes, like you did last time, so go for it.
Thank you, members of the city council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Attorney. I'd like to respond to some of the legal issues that were brought up as far as NRS Chapter 287, which provides for the creation of the coalition, Nevada Health Partners, NHP. That provides for the creation of that coalition, and my understanding is the purpose was to kind of consolidate the power of the various public entities and private corporations for bidding purposes. But nowhere in that statute does it provide an exception from NRS Chapter 332 for public bidding. And all exceptions to statutes are narrowly construed, and we have reviewed that chapter, excuse me. We don't believe that there's any exception to the public bidding requirements. Our understanding was that that was created to, as I said, consolidate the bidding power. There's other sections in Chapter 332 that allows public entities to join other governmental entities' contracts. You'll see that with, you know, federal contracts or other cities. And there's still a requirement that it be publicly bid. So, when that RFP is issued out, they make sure that anybody they anticipate would join it, that their public bidding requirements would be met. And our position is that there was not a public bidding process followed. And Ms. Severson mentioned that there was a RFP. Your support materials say that the city issued an RFP with NHP and that now we can't offer a new bid because the RFP is closed. Well, St. Mary's doesn't understand. Are we following an RFP process or are we not? Our understanding was that Renown was allowed to rebid after July. We have an email between someone from Hometown Health and the Washoe County School District in August confirming different rates. So, we were only trying to participate as we believed that it was called for with the RFP. Also, we don't believe that the city council can delegate their powers to review the contract. If you look at the participation agreement included in your supporting documents, it says that the city has read the agreement and agrees to comply with the obligations. And this is more than just the price. As far as confidentiality, NRS 332.061, which was cited by your council, says that this shall not be disclosed until the award of the contract, and then the contract becomes public. NRS 332.025, which defines what's confidential, says this term does not include the amount of the bid. We believe that all of this is public information and that you, as stewards to the public, should have all of this before you when you make your decision. We ask that you consider our offer or if you need more time, that you provide for more time and issue the RFP properly. Also, Deborah Simon is here if you have any questions for St. Mary's.
Thanks, Ms. Parker.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I have another card here from William McGrath, McDonald Corona, who is representing Renown Health. And also, if Mr. Sloanum would like to speak, we can make out another card and allow you to speak also, sir. But, here, Mr. McGrath. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. My name is Bill McGrath. I'm a private attorney here on behalf of Renown. I'm also here with Dr. Sloanum, who is the President, CEO of Renown, who's prepared to make a presentation if necessary. I'm a partner in the firm of McDonald Corona, where I've practiced law for the last 35 years here in Reno. Very briefly, your staff did an excellent job in not only outlining the process but in explaining the statutes. I had a series of statutes here I was gonna cite, but she read them off perfectly because she understands the statutes which apply. Your city attorney also knows these statutes which apply, et cetera. This is a process whereby Nevada Health Partners, for 20-plus years, and in fact, Mr. Larry Harvey, who's here in the audience, if he comes down and will explain, will give you an excellent understanding of how this collective group has put together the bid process and in this case, put together a bid process which included an RFP. Two hospitals were solicited, Renown and St. Mary's. And they, Mr. Harvey will tell you, as will your staff, that Renown appeared, responded, came up with a whole series of different options, exclusive, non-exclusive, and a whole variety of different options regarding TPA services. St. Mary's did not participate. That's the bottom line. Now, they sent an email in that said, "We'll just like to continue our existing contract for another year with a moderate increase in price." They never told you the increase in price. And in fact, Ms. Simon, who's here, actually wrote an email that said, "Once you sign the contract, we'll tell you what the prices are." And that's just absurd to sign a contract before you hear the prices. They didn't participate. And the CEO of, this is not our first process. We've been through this with the Washoe County School District. We've been through several different meetings there. Mr. Peterson's been there at the school district. Just hours before the school district committee meeting, he delivered a big lengthy letter. And then just hours before the Board of Trustees meeting, he delivered a big lengthy letter objecting. And it sounds like he did that today. I haven't seen the letter. I've seen the other two, I believe they're all the same. But in front of the Committee on Insurance for the Washoe County School District, Helen Lindholm, who's the CEO of St. Mary's, stood up in public comment. I have the quote, I can play it on my phone if you wanna hear it. She said, "We were not able to participate in the RFP because we didn't trust the process." They didn't participate, and yet they're here now throwing a hail mary past that says, "We'll meet or beat whatever prices Renown has offered." Your staff has done a thorough job analyzing the process and followed the process. Renown followed the process, and Renown is ready to proceed and offer your employees tremendous service. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Well, you know, this is public comment, it's not question and answer, period.
I understand.
But if there is some down the road, we'll discuss that. Mr. Sloanum, Dr. Sloanum, I guess if you would like to also make some comments. I don't know that it's a formal presentation other than it's public comment, so keep it to three minutes, please, and we'll be all set.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, city attorney. My name is Dr. Anthony Sloanum. I am the President and CEO for Renown Health. We appreciate your time today. Fundamentally, as you heard from Mr. McGrath, if there was an RFP, we followed the procedure. As you heard on the first page of the RGJ and in public hearings with the Washoe County School District, my dear colleague Helen Lindholm said she chose not to participate in the process because they didn't trust it. That was a business decision, simply stated. We won the bid, and now there's no opportunity for a second bite at the apple because you didn't follow the process. For 20 years, Renown Health has participated in a process with the Nevada Business Group on health. Six of the times, each time this RFP came out, we lost the bid. We thanked the people who made that decision, and we vowed to come back more competitively next time with a response to the proposal and do our best to serve the people who requested it. Unfortunately, in this case, we won the bid, and we're being challenged on a number of fronts because we followed the process and did our work with a competitive bid. Please do not allow the failure to participate to change or provide a second opportunity in an outside-of-process opportunity. We thank you for the opportunity to present to you today, and we look forward to serving your employees and retirees with their healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Next, we have Deborah Simon. Again, you have three minutes, ma'am? Again, you have three minutes, ma'am?
I would just like to clarify that St. Mary's did participate. We met with Darren Severson, and he acknowledged, when we met with him, provided him our information and our rates, that it was being accepted as a bid to the proposal. And I would just like to clarify the participation agreement that was mentioned earlier. St. Mary's allowed for the consultant to review our rates that they had selected. And during one of the presentations, we attended every presentation except the initial one, I happened to be in the air and had talked with both Darren and Terry Lightfoot, and let him know that I wouldn't be able to. Could we make other arrangements because we would have participated? Gonzalo Hernandez, who represents the Washoe County School District, had stated in one of the meetings, "Well, Deborah, if we select St. Mary's, I should be able to see those rates." And we said, "We agree. That's certainly a reasonable request." And so we left the meeting and then shared with Darren and with Terry Lightfoot the participation agreement. So it wasn't to say, "Here, sign this, we'll give you our rates." It was at the request of Gonzalo Hernandez. And it was our understanding that some of the other members, too, may want to sign it. So that's why we provided that information the way that we did. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Okay. Let's bring it back to the council for action or questions or whatever. Ms. Ratty?
So I'd like to hear from Mr. Harvey because we have one side saying they did participate, one side saying they didn't participate, or the consultant, whichever makes sense to answer that question.
Yep.
Since they were the ones who orchestrated the process. And again, I just want to make this clear. We keep saying "we" in RFP, but the clarity here is there was an RFP issued. It was not issued by the city. It was issued by Mr. Harvey's group. And so when Chris, our Ms. Severson is sitting at the dais and saying, "We did an RFP process," you mean "we" as a member of the health coalition, not "we" as a member of the city.
Yes.
So that's why I want to hear from Mr. Harvey.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Thank you, Ms. Ratty. Mr. Mayor, or council members. Laurie Harvey for the record, so you know. Glad to be in front of you again. It's been a while. Yes, I currently, one of my hats is the President of Nevada Health Partners, which is fully owned by Nevada Business Group on Health. And back in 1993, five groups got together after a PPO program was trying to get their hospital bid and asked, trying to get their big customers to really help them. And basically, the school district, myself, back then it was Johnny Pullman, the Assistant City Manager in Risk Management, actually was part of City Sparks, was part of the group, goes that far back. Washoe County and RRCVA initially, excuse me, NV Energy. So we had a real interesting, diverse group who talked and said, "You know, we really should do this together." And the county, who really wanted to look into it, they're the ones who got the legislation forward to pass the law that, as was mentioned, to kind of make sure, many of them, I know the school districts and the cities felt they had the ability through professional service contracts and insurance to do that on their own, but we kind of made sure. They felt they passed that rule that they'd feel more comfortable. So in '95, it took till then before that was passed, and we formed as an organization. So understand who it is. It's not Larry Harvey's group.
Because you can't remember the initials of anything.
We are all owners of it. So City Sparks is a founder and owner of this organization. So it's a nonprofit organization that was founded firmly for the purpose of better to go after professional services. Hospital service was the number one and the biggest cost. Since then, we've taken on a prescription benefit management program, so all those 13 members, plus frankly, several additional outside self-insured members, participate in that contract. So we do a number of them, the hospitals being our biggest and most focal one. So what we did was, we went out to bid as we did back in '95. And back in '95, the hospitals didn't know what to do with us. You know, a group of business people, they're looking for Aetna's and Blue Crosses. And so finally, with St. Mary's who kind of broke in, finally, were started working with us. We did a pretty good partnership over time. You know, there's been questions about how often do we bid? We have three-year contracts with two-year extensions potentially. So honestly, they usually go about five years, barring any problems. So in that time, we have gone out five times in that process. So St. Mary's has been a part of that every time. This is the same process we have used virtually every time. Getting an outside consultant, going through an RFP process is pretty consistent with how we've handled this each and every time. We've never had a challenge or concern brought to our attention. Usually, the two main hospitals, as you know, it is St. Mary's and now Renown, back from Northern Medical Center back then, and the other hospitals, we have worked hard to be a partnership. So we've always been able to include them by us working together. That is not normally in these PPOs. So it's some work that we started years ago, adding more services, making sure our employees have the best quality and the best cost. So as far as that goes, we went out for the RFP in March. Initially, we met with each hospital. We started off with the incumbent, St. Mary's. We sat with Helen Lindholm and Deborah Simon, and we, three of us at the time, three board members, and that includes Chris Severson, Mr. Hernandez from the school district, and myself, we met with them and told them what our intentions were. We thought, "Let's tell them what we want to do, why we're doing it." And Chris, I thought, did a great job, Ms. Severson, of telling you how that was working. We all decided it was the right time to go out and ask for services, both exclusive and non-exclusive, talk to both. We actually got a, we thought, a warm reception from St. Mary's that they were going to By the time, right before, there was a pre-bid conference we asked them both to attend. And Renown attended with all the people present to kind of give us an idea, their CEO, their Vice President here, Director of Member Services and others, to show us what they could do to ask the right questions, so they knew what we wanted, and the RFP could start off strong. Yes, St. Mary's first said they couldn't make it. We were concerned, so we said, "Well, give us another date." You know, we never did get another date for that pre-bid conference. We did get an email from them, as was stated, and in it said, "We are not going to respond formally the RFP." It did say, "We are going to provide a two-year extension." Of course, we were looking for a three-year rate contract with two extensions, and that's what they provided. It took some time, but of course, you know, when you go out to bid, you would like two bidders to try to kind of get things off. And so at the end of the day, Mr. Severson, our consultant, through our direction, we did accept the rates they provided. So although it wasn't in the form of the proper FP, and we could have, and I told them, you know, we could have just got rid of the RFP and said, "You didn't respond." They said, "We know. We think this is better for you." So we ended up accepting the rates, and we did use those rates to do the proposal, to do the matching. We did have issues that came up. Example would be, yes, we chose one consultant to represent all of us, but as you can imagine, you've got NV Energy, the school district, you've got the county. Many have their own consultants as well. And so Renown provided their contract rates to all our consultants as long as the confidentiality agreement was signed. In the past, St. Mary's has always provided their rates to our consultants as long as agreement was signed. And this was the first year they refused. They said, "No, they were not going to go out because they were concerned. They didn't trust that it would stay confidential." And so we had two different meetings after the bid conference, one finalist meeting. And again, they asked the question, they came back with no, because example would have been, and they used Mr. Hernandez, the school district, who has the most lives of any of us, frankly, and said, "You know, I really need to see those so I can do my analysis because I have fiduciary responsibility to my, to our organization." And again, it was, "We are not going to provide that to individual organizations or to your brokers." So those kinds of issues or problems made it difficult. We got very little participation at our meetings, and usually, when we, we actually extended the timeframe to give them one more opportunity. So we extended one more time. We had questions on both proposals. So we said, "Let's put our questions out to Renown." We had four or five questions. Did the same thing with St. Mary's, give them one last opportunity. And to give a lot of credit to Renown, every time that we had a question or problem, they responded very succinctly. And very often came with either a change in service or a change in rates based on our question or concern. St. Mary's came every time with the same one-and-a-half-page sheet that said the services they were offering us, nothing that was related to really rates or like promises. They weren't related to cost savings. And both, both systems, I should say, I want to start off with, I would go to either one of these hospitals and feel very confident. We learned very along, quality wasn't the issue. We put that up front. Both of them do great things, both presented great programs, so you should know right off the bat, we took that off. This is going to be about price and services. And frankly, the last is partnership, because we realized over the years, when you do a hospital contract, things change. You know, new service comes in. You get CyberKnife, you get these new things happen, and you want them to come to you and be able to negotiate each time those things occur. And we were having a strange issue with St. Mary's not really participating, negotiating, and we were getting a different response. So when we looked at it, it all came down to three things. First, rates, rates overall, and you heard it from your, Chris Severson and others, all of us saw a reduction in rates. Second, the broad services. There's more services offered through the Renown program. That's a benefit to our employees. And third was opting for partnership, the ability to work through issues and problems. So I will tell you, did they respond? The only recall to respond it was because we accepted their renewal as an acceptable response to view the rates. But they were not a real strong participant in the RFP process, and we have the documentation to show in their own words, they didn't do it. And it's true that Helen Lindholm, at one meeting, the Assurance Committee, got up and said, "We didn't participate because we didn't trust the process." And that was a shock to me because those words were never mentioned through the whole RFP process.
Thank you, Larry. Questions? Mr. Adams, you have something?
Yeah, as a follow-up to Councilwoman Lawson's question to me concerning standing. And with all due deference to St. Mary's, St. Mary's could come in and make an offer to Sparks that, "We'll give you everything at 25%." We do not have the authority to enter into any type of an agreement. The agreement is with NHP up there, not us, as Councilwoman Ratty pointed out, that it, because it wasn't Sparks. We don't have any authority to modify, change, or ask any type of, anything in addition to any type of negotiated term that has already been arrived at.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, questions? Motions? Recommendations? Ms. Ratty?
I'm still needing a little bit of help. So I'm looking at the agenda item. Consider discussion in 9.7, to be clear. Consider discussion and possible approval to participate in an agreement negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with Renown. The way that reads to me is that the agreement is with Renown. So help me through that.
The participation agreement does have both City of Sparks and Renown's signatures on it, as well as Nevada Health Partners. So Nevada Health Partners negotiated the agreement, and we are asking you to allow us to sign a participation agreement.
You're part of Nevada Health?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So then, my next question is, do we only look at our participation agreement with the group?
NHP.
NHP, when there's been a bid process, or do we renew it annually?
Can you ask that again?
So we're doing it now?
Yes.
Because there's been a change in the environment, as you suggested, and obviously, there's a change in the outcome of the provider.
Yes.
When else do we renew that agreement?
When NHP negotiates a new agreement with a provider.
Okay.
So, for example, when we have a new pharmacy benefit manager contract. If it's not a renewal as stated in the existing contract, if it is a new contract, then we would sign a new participation agreement.
And that's our normal process, is to approve the participation agreement?
Yes.
Not the contract itself?
Yes.
Okay. So where I'm getting to is, so I'm comfortable and actually even love the idea of working with a nonprofit organization to leverage the number of employees to increase rates. Clearly, we have got to become smart and strategic about how we manage healthcare costs, and this is a way to do that. I would disagree with just one thing that Mr. Harvey said. We are not an owner of that. We are a member participant, because it's a nonprofit organization with a governing board, I'm assuming, no ownership.
That's correct.
Because I think that that's important, that we're a participating member, it matters.
Right.
So I'm really comfortable with the strategy. I think it's a smart, strategic strategy. I'm comfortable having heard with, from everybody that we've heard today with the process. I mean, it seems to me like the process was similar to processes we've held in the past, though how people have interfaced with that process may have been different than what we've done in the past. The one thing that I'm really not thrilled about still is the lack of transparency. And so it sounds to me like, again, since the last one hasn't really been done since 2006, that's, it's a relatively new thing for me to really pay attention to the fact that the contract itself, so that I, as an elected official, could have a greater confidence or understanding in the savings and where those savings are coming from, is a little bit disconcerting to me. That said, my understanding is we've got a 90-day-out clause with our current contract, right? We must do that.
That's correct.
Okay. So that leaves us zero breathing room to do anything different but to act today. Is that correct?
We could do, we could delay it.
If we don't act today, that contract renews.
With St. Mary's?
With CDS, to be, just to be.
The contract would.
Or UHN, sorry.
It would perpetuate, because we have an ongoing, the contract with CDS has not expired December 31st. We are asking you to terminate it so that we can go to a new TPA December 5.
Right. I'm not so much worried about the TPA, but we're really talking about the hospital services.
That's correct. We would not, we would not have hospital services. But the hospital contract expires, so it's a little bit different. We're not asking you to give us an out on the hospital contract because it will expire on its own.
Okay, so the contract with St. Mary's just expires.
It just expires.
So the contract with CDS must be terminated and the contract with UHN.
Correct.
Oh, well, that's, that helps. Okay.
Well, I'm glad we brought clarity to something.
Thank you.
It is very confusing, and let me tell you, if you, having been through the process and having seen the rates, it's really pretty overwhelming, just the amount of complexity. I'm not saying that it's not doable, because that's why we hired someone to do the numbers for us, but when you look at all the different levels and rates and the, even if you saw it, it's just very, very complex.
So to say that back, we not only get a benefit, we get the benefit of a better rate by participating in this group process, but we also get the benefit of some external expertise that it would be difficult for us to have as a city our size?
Absolutely.
Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
Okay, further questions or a motion? Anybody want to make a motion? Let me just say, I'm comfortable with what we presented here today, comfortable with the process. It's one we've done in the past. I think I'm comfortable with what Mr. Harvey said and how it was, that I believe they were non-responsive, like you told me a long time ago. So I'm comfortable moving ahead with this thing. That's just my opinion. So does anybody want to try a motion, or? Mr. Smith?
This is 9.7.
I would do 9.7 first.
Okay, I move to approve participation in agreement negotiated by Nevada Health Partners and HP with Renown Medical Center and Hometown Health for the provision of a group of group hospital network and third-party administration, TPA. Services for the city's employees and retirees covered by the group health insurance plan as recommended by staff and authorization for the city manager to execute agreements for these services.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.7. Discussion, Ms. Ratty?
One last question to the city attorney. Do you have any reason to believe that we're violating open meeting law in any way today?
I wouldn't allow you to continue working if I did, but no, I have no problems at all with this. And any issues or any concerns about the RFP process should be directed to NHP and not to City of Sparks because we were not the author of the bid.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please vote. Please display. He passes unanimously with those present. Mr. Schmidt is abstention. All right, let's move on to 9.5 then, next. Consideration, discussion, possible approval, terminate the existing with CDS group. Any questions or looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to terminate the existing contract with CDS Group Health as the city's third-party administrator effective December 30th, 2015.
Mr. Smith? Second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 9.5, which is the termination of the existing contract with CDS Group Health. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Passed unanimously, Mr. Schmidt is in an abstention. Okay, moving on, nine point six. Consideration discussion, possible approval to terminate the existing contract with Universal, Universal Health Network, UHN, Ms. Ratty for. Questions? Any questions? Motion?
Just comments.
Go ahead, Ms. Ratty.
I do want to thank the staff for their incredible hard work on this, and it's a complex issue, and I, please don't take my series of questions as any lack of gratitude or lack of confidence in the ability of the staff to move this forward.
Mr. Smith?
I move to terminate the existing contract with UHN as the city's third-party administrator for the City of Sparks effective December thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Do you have a second? Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve nine point six.
I just, I just wanted you, if I may, Mr. Smith, you said third-party administrator and a third-party network?
It says administer, administrator in my motion.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so is the correct verbiage network?
That's what I, I would prefer.
Okay, then I'll amend my motion to say third-party network.
Thank you.
Okay with the second or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
It does say administrator.
Okay.
So it's network.
Network.
Everyone understand the motion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, nine point eight is a first reading.
This is a first reading of bill number two-six-nine-four, an ordinance by the City of Sparks amending Title Twenty to include standards for urban agriculture and other matters properly relating thereto.
Okay, nine point eight is a first read, this is the first reading of bill number twenty-six-ninety-four. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, October twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Nine point nine is a first reading.
First reading of bill number two-six-nine-five, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-point-two-nine of the Sparks Municipal Code to clarify the definitions and adding chapter twenty-point-two-nine-point-oh-two-five to prohibit any person from maintaining, creating, or establishing a location or structure for the purpose of feeding, sheltering, or providing sustenance to feral cats or attracting high-risk species within the boundaries of the city, providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of bill number twenty-six-ninety-five. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted after the, after the regular city council meeting on Monday, October twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, at six PM. Okay, moving on, ten point one. Public hearing, possible approval of the consolidated plan annual performance and evaluation report, CAPER. George, welcome. Mr. Graham.
Today we have for you, for your consideration and approval that I might be able to submit the CAPER report, which is the consolidated annual performance evaluation. It's a part of the CDBG grant agreement that annually I'm reporting on previous accomplishments with, under the CDBG grant. And, and I'd like to present that. And also some background, we've received approximately six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in CDBG grant, and we also reprogrammed some previous year to accomplish pedestrian improvements, housing, and also as far as supporting the general administrative things of the community at, activities center for the homeless and many other services. So what I'm doing is I'm reporting on all of the accomplishment with CDBG, home funds, and all what we administrated over the last year. And so I'm prepared to answer any questions on any accomplishments.
Okay, questions for Mr. Graham on the CAPER? No questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it to the public. Anyone like to speak to ten point one? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Questions? Mr. Lawson?
Would you make a motion?
Sure.
I move to approve the submittal of the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for program year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen for the City of Sparks to hug.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve ten point one, consolidated plan annual performance and evaluation report. Any further discussion? Sure, go ahead.
George, I just want to thank you for the work you do.
Oh, thank you.
You're very responsive whenever we ask you to check into a citizen that's having a problem or something, and it's really appreciated, they appreciate it too, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Sharp, sharp, he looks sharp.
I try.
Cleans up pretty well.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Passed unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
We're not having a closed door, are we, Jeff? Okay. Thirteen point one, comments from the public, Karen Boger, followed by Karen Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, do I need to push something here? Or am I?
You're on.
Okay, great. Karen Boger, I'm a retired schoolteacher, Washoe County, and taught primarily at schools here in Sparks, actually. And, and over forty years of volunteer as a conservation activist on Nevada wildlife and public lands issues, and a board member of both the Nevada Chapter of that Country Hunter and Anglers and the Nevada Wildlife Coalition, although I'm speaking to you as an individual. Today, as sportsmen, we provide the primary support for our Nevada Department of Wildlife, both in funds and sweat equity. And our organizations work toward maintaining healthy Nevada wildlife and habitat. And so as such, we were, or I should say, speaking for myself, I am pleased to see that there is a proposal, ordinance to ban feral cat colonies. And I know I have written to you in the past and this morning on this as well, so I thought it was time for me to come in person and speak up on this and just urging you, since I know this was just the first reading, to give it very, give this ordinance very serious consideration between now and your next meeting because I, I really believe that it is the humane thing to do. There's nothing humane about death of animals, feral animals, and that it's the right thing to do because it's proactive to address an existing problem that is right now causing some pretty severe negative impacts as well as potential negative impacts. And I won't reiterate my long and growing list of, of problems that I see with the continuing tacit, not approval, but allowing feral cat colonies to exist. It's my understanding that many of those opposed to this ban have a notion that it would, that we should legalize the cat colonies and initiate a trap, neuter, spay, inoculate, and re-release program with caretakers to feed the colonies. And I know this has been, this has been done in other areas of the country with varying success, but I think I pointed out to you in my long list of concerns that it really doesn't solve the primary issues with, with feral cats. And it is not a humane situation either. I hope that you'll urge those opposed to this ban to consider the proactive solutions, and maybe you might have some of your own too, that I included in my letter, including self-contained, entirely contained sanctuary for these animals. And I would beg you to consider how people would respond, should we have feral dog colonies running around the streets of Sparks? I think we would act on that right away, and I see this in that same vein.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Karen Jacobs?
Members of the council, Mayor Martini, City Attorney Adams, I have a further question for you, please. For me to be, to bring a good conclusion in the next couple of weeks, and I will have a report to our city attorney over here. How many feral cats, does the city know how many feral cats are included in this ordinance, this proposed ordinance? Do you have a number?
Okay, again, this is public comments, not question and answer. Mr. Kronk will take your question and report to you later.
Okay, thank you. I would need that, please, sir, for me to bring a good, good conclusion for the next meeting.
And I've got her, her name here.
I can give him a card.
Yeah, give me, please, so he'll be able to contact you. Okay, anyone else in our public comment? Okay, comments from the city council and city manager, I think Mr. Kronk has something, go ahead.
Thank you, I do have a couple of announcements to make. The following committee appointments are available. The Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee is seeking three members, one member of the residential construction industry for a two-year term, one member of the commercial development industry for a three-year term, one member of the construction industry for a four-year term, and all subsequent appointments will be for four-year terms. Applications for the membership to the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee will be accepted until the close of business on October sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. The other committee is the Airport Noise Advisory Committee is seeking two members for a two-year term, and those applications for the Noise Advisory Committee will be accepted until the close of business on November first, two thousand and fifteen. Persons interested in serving on these committees should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cyspark.us. Click on City Services on the webpage, then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, then click on Fill Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else's comments? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
I'd like to call the order, this is a private meeting. See meeting of September twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, with a roll call. Chairperson Ratty?
Here.
Agency members Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
And Acting Chief Administrative Officer Jeff Kronk?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, I'm moving on to item four point one, approval of the agenda.
Second.
Moved by agency member Schmidt, seconded by agency member Lawson. All those, sorry, Smith?
Smith.
Anybody have any comment or discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consideration impossible, item five point one, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency of August twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Moved by agency member Martini, seconded by agency member Bybee. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six point one, report of claims and bills approved for payment appropriation transfers for the period of August sixth, two thousand and fifteen through September ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by agency member Lawson, seconded by agency member Martini. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item seven point one, comments from the public on the redevelopment agency agenda. Seeing none, any comments from the agency or chief administrative officer? Seeing none, we, we are adjourned.